Called into session, I would ask that Mr. Steve Miccolini, please come up. Is Steve here?
Yes.
That's true? Okay, thank you. We'll wait for him. Hi, Steve. Guido Maniscalco said that there's a sea of red and we're looking for the red tie. He always wears a red tie. If there was ever a Steve Miccolini action figure, it would be very easy to make. Well, if every... Mr. Miccolini will be doing the prayer, and if you could thereafter, please stay standing, if you're able to do so, for the pledge. Thank you.
Good morning. And the Lord said, "It is right and just that we should pray, and that we are humbled before you, O Lord. We are reminded that many are asked, but few are chosen. You as elected officials have been chosen by the Lord's people, and you hold that trust to be good, to do good things, and to be righteous, make informed and wise decisions." Throughout the grace of the Lord, His shield will protect you, His light will enlighten you, His grace will guide you, and we ask for your blessings upon this newly-elected city council and the mayor. We ask for your blessings upon the first responders, the armed forces, and teachers who hold that faith and trust in your name, O Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dean Felder?
Here.
Goode?
Here.
Maniscalco?
Here.
Citro?
Here.
Miranda?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
Vieira?
Here.
Okay. Move for...anyone here move for approval of the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, Mr. Dean Felder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to pull a few extra items, I apologize. Items 27 and 28, which are two affordable housing items, and...
I would like to pull the same two, so...
Okay, good deal. Great minds think alike. And then items 32 and 33.
Okay, we'll pull them...I'll tell you all as a general rule, we'll pull them today, but staff needs to have...we'll pull them if staff is able to come for them, because I have...were they giving notice?
We're gonna pull them no matter what, as long as we vote on it, so...
Okay, but in other words, in terms of having...if I may, Councilman Dean Felder, staff needs to come and brief us on those issues, so I would say we can do that today, because actually, when I first got elected, I pulled an item with two minutes before the agenda, so I'm not judging, because I did the very same thing, but from now on, let's try to give them 24 hours' notice if possible. Can we agree to that, I assume, from here on out?
Not necessarily, but we'll try our best, thank you.
Well, it'll be the policy of this chair.
Could I make one other comment about the chair, about the agenda? It's my understanding that it's the policy of the council to require all agenda items be ready by Thursday, and then the agenda should be ready on Friday. We received this on Monday afternoon.
Sure.
And we need, especially with agenda this heavy, requiring some of us to go back and look at videos and others, we need as much time as possible. I would suggest, I don't know if that's the chair's authority or the board's authority, but I would suggest that we stick strictly to that...
Sure.
...goal, and not to pick on anybody who brings in anything late, but just that we...that anything that's not ready by Thursday, that we just delay till a future meeting, so that we have plenty of time to go through this, and also set up meetings with staff members.
Mr. Chair? And that's a very good mitigating factor. Yes, sir.
Mr. Shelby, is there some kind of standing rule or policy?
Yes, yes, Mr. Goode, if I can. Rule 7A states, "All petitions, communications..."this is your rules of procedure, council's rules. "All petitions, communications, staff reports, resolutions, ordinances, and other matters intended for consideration of the city council shall be filed with the office of the city clerk on or before 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the meeting of the city council. The clerk, in turn, shall assign such petitions, communications, resolutions, ordinances, and other matters to the most appropriate placement on the agenda, taking into consideration the requests made at the time of the placement of the agenda. Ordinances and resolutions related to fees are to be placed under staff reports."
Yep, and we'll communicate that, obviously, to the administration with regards to having the agenda put on time, because that's a very good point, Councilman Carlson, that it should be put on time, but what I would ask is a courtesy to all the staff is that, if possible, that if items are going to be pulled, that the administration be given 24 hours' notice, which I think is very reasonable. Obviously, there's times when you go, "Hey, I just thought of something." That happens, trust me, that happens, but I would just ask that as a courtesy, if I may. Okay, and I'm gonna ask...
Also, in regard to courtesy, I found it difficult in regard to this process, the memo we received last week from the administration that says we, if we have questions, we should route them through the Chief of Staff, which actually slows down the process and is counter to what you're suggesting, so... Anyway, we'll wrestle through all this in the weeks to come, thank you.
And again, if possible, I understand logistics, Councilman, and I know you're proceeding in good faith, so, again, I did the very same thing when I got on here, and I was given the same statements, so that's it. Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for council's, particularly the new members' information, Rule 7C relating to this matter states specifically, "An individual member of the city council wanting to remove an item from the committee reports consented agenda should attempt to do so a day or more in advance of the meeting by notifying the members of council, the clerk, and the chief of staff by memorandum or email stating whether the member of council wishes staff to be present to discuss the item." Again, it's a "should," so...
Sure.
It does that as...
So hopefully, they'll abide by their rules, and we'll abide by our rules, so...
Aspiration.
Hopefully, exactly. We'll aspire to that, and that's all that I would ask, and I appreciate everyone's assistance.
Should we make a note also that the vibrations are from the construction next door, I think?
It's not from my phone. And if I may, under addendum, we have item number four for US SOCOM is here to make a presentation. I'd like to move that, if I may, to item number one. We have an active-duty Colonel here who has to defend our country, and if I may, have a motion for that.
Sorry.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and thank you very much for that courtesy, I appreciate it. I would ask, if I may, for the individuals from the Warrior Games to come up, please. We have here Colonel Kerry Harbaugh, who is Director of US SOCOM's Care Coalition, supporting special operations, wounded, ill, and injured service members and their family. Ms. Kristi Tozier, who is Chief Marketing Officer for the 2019 Warrior Games, welcome. And we have here a good friend of mine, who I love dearly and many of us know, retired Marine Corporal Sergeant Mike Nicholson, a Tampa native and Plant High School graduate, who was injured in a bomb explosion in Afghanistan in 2011 that left him a triple amputee, but in 2017, Mike, in his first Warrior Games, won six gold medals, and this council honored him with a council commend. The reason we invited the good folks from the Warrior Games to come is because in June 21st through June 30th, we are having the great honor here in the city of Tampa to have the Warrior Games come here in Tampa. 300 wounded warriors will be coming here to compete with their family from out of town, and I want those men and women and their families to have an all-American welcome from the city, from this county, including our nearly 100,000 veterans. So I will leave the talking to Colonel Harbaugh. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, and thank you to all the distinguished members of the city council and all the administration in the city of Tampa, from Mayor Buckhorn's administration, now moving into Mayor Castor's administration. We've received nothing but the most tremendous support out of all of you in order to deliver what we hope to be the best Warrior Games that ever has been put out there. The Department of Defense Warrior Games is only about nine years old, it's gone through some permutations, but it was 2017, the determination that US SOCOM would take its turn as one of the five Warrior Care Programs recognized by the US Congress, and that we, in that rotation, would bring the Warrior Games under our leadership. Now, the location for that, for us, was easy, not just because US SOCOM is based there at MacDill, it's that we are citizens of Tampa as well. We've fallen in love with this city, as I have personally, it's become a place that I'm guaranteed I'm gonna retire to, and for that reason, when General Thomas, the commander at the time, was sitting next to me courtside at the 2017 Games, and he said, "Kerry, what do you think about bringing the Warrior Games, about us doing it?" And I said, "Sir, Tampa, come on, look at it," and he goes, "You're absolutely right." And that's why General Thomas, who just recently gave up command of US SOCOM in the end of March, has retired here to this area as well. We were in love with it, we knew that this town would pour out the support, and that's exactly what's happened. Most importantly, what you've allowed us to do is because of the embrace of this community and its graciousness, is that you've also allowed us to keep the cost very, very reasonable. We're gonna be the most affordable games in DOD Warrior Game history. That's good news, because that's helped set context for us to preserve the games for the long haul. Escalating costs, we're making it have to be scrutinized by the Department of Defense, whether or not it was sustainable, because it was getting very expensive, and the way to do that was to look for the right community to bring it into that could be a host, a co-host for you. We had that from the outset, Councilman Vieira had been very outspoken, as had members of the US Congress and the US Senate delegation from Florida, and the governor of Florida at the time, Governor Scott, all came forward and made it clear to the Department of Defense that Tampa was excited about bringing the games. And what we're gonna be doing, 21 through 30 June, and guys like Mike here will be out there on the field of play, competing for Team Marine Corps. Okay, I gotta admit, I'm for Team SOCOM, but it is my team, but also, I mean, I'm the Director of the Warrior Games, so I'm cheering for them all, but I love Mike dearly. But we will have 315 athletes out there, 200 US each of the five programs, the four traditional services as you know them, along with then the SOCOM team, will be fielding teams of 40, and then we will have about 115 from five partner nations, from the UK, from Australia, from Canada, and from Netherlands and Denmark, all coming into this area. The, again, I'm anticipating, just based on what we've been receiving in resources, outreach, volunteerism. For instance, we had really the need for about 500 volunteers, we've already got 1,250 on the books. It's things like that that we knew we would see out of Tampa, that you're all gonna wrap your loving arms around our athletes as they get here, and what we would really like to see, which would also be a bit of a sea change for Warrior Games, is a lot of public, a lot of fans in the stands, is our mantra. We'd love to see people coming out to the games. We'll start off in a few different venues. We start with golf out at the Eagles Golf Club in Odessa. We've added golf as well Warrior Game sport this year for the first time, but we knew that Florida would be very conducive to golf. Then we're gonna have track and field in those days that come up. The 22nd is our opening ceremony at Amalie Arena. Track and field, by the way, is conducted at the University of South Florida. Then we will be doing cycling on Sunday morning, the 23rd on Bay Shore Drive. Again, thanks to the city of Tampa opening up and allowing us to do that, because you know that requires shutting down some roads for the morning. We will have the opening ceremony, by the way, backtrack to the Saturday night prior. Amalie Arena, Jon Stewart is our emcee, the great Sam Moore from Sam and Dave, I'm a soul man, you know, that guy, okay? He had done a song that's become the anthem of the Warrior Games, I think it's in our video that we're gonna show to you here very briefly. At the same time, we'll have Sam Moore out there, and we've got a final, we've got an entertainer, ink's almost dry on it, but I'm not gonna say anything until the ink is dry, but we've got a great country music artist that will be there for opening ceremonies as well. We hope to see as much of the public come out. It's the only venue, well, opening and closing ceremonies, the ones in Amalie, the only ones that have a modest ticket price, $10 or below, we haven't quite set that ticket price just yet, but it's gonna be very affordable for family. Everything else at Warrior Games is free of charge. So, again, go forward from the opening ceremonies, track and field, cycling, and then you're gonna see most of the sports in the Tampa Convention Center. And again, the city of Tampa completely absolved of any rental costs for the Tampa Convention Center. Just amazing, we can't thank you enough, reduced it. You know, what we have now is only infrastructure costs to running the inside of the games, those are natural and quite affordable. We, again, can't thank you enough. Tampa Convention Center for about a week's worth of sports in there, all the court sports, wheelchair basketball, wheelchair rugby, which we added to this game, very exciting game. Just watch these guys clanging into each other in chairs. Very, 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 the most, in fact, already we're hearing from our wounded warriors that came out for our last sport camp, that the rugby was added, how much they love it, it was like, man, we needed this years ago. So that's where we are, wheelchair rugby. We also have indoor powerlifting, and our indoor rowing and powerlifting, and we will have wheelchair basketball, all played on these courts, along with shooting and archery, air rifle, air pistol, and both recurve bow and compound bow, with all levels of disabilities supported. So you'll see folks that have got the disabilities of Mike, that are out there, able to do sports that you would think only a fully ambulatory with all of their limbs existing would be able to do, because of the adaptations that we've been able to put in these sports, and the fact that these sports are great at helping our folks rehabilitate, get back to life, and recover in life. So, once again, we can't thank you enough. Mike, if you'd like to say anything about the Warrior Games and its impact?
I just wanna thank you guys for having us out here. I actually just returned from the Marine Camp, and I can tell you that SOCOM's got a lot of work cut out for them. I know they have their camp just recently as well, so we're looking for...
So you're gonna give us a challenge, is what you're saying?
A little bit of a challenge. I was lucky enough to be selected for Team Marine back in 2017, given the first opportunity to compete in Chicago, and it profoundly changed my life, it profoundly changed how I viewed things, it motivated me to stay active and healthy, and I'm just one of 400 athletes, so the impact of these games is tremendous, and carries down, you know, for years and years to come. These games allow a lot of guys to get more active in their lifestyle, and they stick with that, because they realize how good it is, and how fun it is, and how healthy it is for them. So these games have a long-lasting impact for all of our veterans, our active-duty warriors, and I think it's an honor to be able to compete in front of the city, and I think you guys are in for a real treat. You're gonna see quite a few amazing things, just from this Marine Camp, I saw a lot, so I can only imagine what all the other services in our partner countries have in store for you guys. So, thank you very much for being so supportive of us, we really appreciate it. Thanks.
Our closing ceremony, by the way, takes us back to Amalie Arena. Again, we'll have Jon Stewart in there as our emcee, and as it looks right now, we've got ink pretty much dry on the great Ms. Sarah Evans, as our country music artist who will be performing our concert for closing. Again, we'll hope to see a lot of the Tampa community come out and support that. The ticket's limited, because Amalie Arena is so, you know, only so large, but once the tickets are on the streets, people will be able to purchase those and set up a time to get out there and see it. All the other sports, again, free of charge, come out to the games, we want to see you. Fans in the stands, like I said, fans in the stands is what we'd love to see. It inspires these guys to see you supporting them, they know they have your support, we know this community, like none other, will support the games the way that we had hoped to do. If we can, we have a great video, we'd like you, just get you a little inspiration for the morning.
I will do whatever it takes. I will show my face. I will bear my teeth. I will show my strength. You will not believe. I'll roll. I'll show for you. Yes, I've died. Well, I've fallen. Roll on, I'll show for you. I will show for you.
Hopefully, it gets your blood stirred up. I mean, we're hoping to see, and certainly hope to see, all the leadership of Tampa make the run out to the games, to the ceremonies, but just as importantly, get out there for the sports. Thank you so much, again, for all of your support and for having us, and General Rich Clark, the Commander of US SOCOM, is, of course, our primary host, and he's hoping to see you there. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you, guys.
I forgot, I am subject to question.
We're proud to have you here in Tampa. I've seen our chair at a lot of events, pre-events, I just wanna know what team is he coaches, I can make sure I'm there to watch that.
I'm not there to coach, trust me, you know that.
I've said this myself, I mean, I have a bias, I've been running the Warrior Care Program and the Team SOCOM for a little over five years, so you know where my predilections are at. However, all of them are worthy of our support, and the fact is that, Mike would tell you, you win by getting out there. The fact that they've been able to get past these devastating injuries, illnesses on some, we have some folks that are also on these teams that have suffered illnesses like cancer or still dealing with them, the fact that they've been able to rebound in life, to show the resiliency of our service members is tremendous, and that's why it's worth your time.
Councilman Dean Felder?
Actually, in all seriousness, piggybacking on this, maybe you should assign each one of us a branch of the service, and we can be the mascot, or something like that.
I would allow you to arm wrestle over that yourselves, but I'd love to see, you know, some of you may have military service in your background, and might wanna go with whatever drierped uniform or color that you supported at that time.
My dad is Army, so...
All right, outstanding, and that is where my second heart goes, naturally, because an Army officer, just been in special ops a long time. Thank you.
Sir?
If I can, are the golfers accepting applications for caddies?
You know, sir, that is actually fair, and we would take caddies. We have, we've been getting great support when it comes to the golf event. Our golf ambassador, so to speak, is, of course, living in the Tampa Bay area, and that's the great Jan Stevenson. She's become a tremendous, she's about to be inducted into the World Golf Hall of Fame here on the 10th of June, amazing woman, and she has dedicated her, and of course, she was Australian-born, and she's an Aussie, but she's a US citizen, and she, with Tarpon Woods Golf Course, has provided that facility for a training ground for our folks, and she has also been pulling in a lot of LPGA and PGA interests into our tournament. Plus, the PGA of America and its Hope Program that works with wounded warriors has been very involved. We've got some college golfers, I know, because I have one in my home, and the team from the Citadel, you can tell where we tend to lean, she's gonna be an Army officer, at any rate, she's also on the golf team at the Citadel, she played golf, she was the captain of the golf team at Plant High, and so, at any rate, her golf, some of her golf mates are coming down to caddy, so we're looking at, you know, those that have got golf skill that can potentially assist our golfers. So yes, that is an option.
I, for one, would be honored to be able to loop for one of our wounded warriors, and if you can get my information to my legislative aide, I'll see if there's other people out there would like to also help.
Well, thank you, sir, we'll take that, and we'll get the information to you, and excited to have you with us.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, we really appreciate it. God bless you guys.
Thank you for advancing us in your agenda, I know you've got a lot of the Lord's work to do, and thanks for moving on so we can get to ours.
Thank you, thank you, guys, thank you. Okay, now we move on to the next one, which would be for Councilman Miranda.
Honorable Chairman, Tampa City Council, honorable members of Tampa City Council, my pleasure this morning to stand next to Kathleen Walker Herbert. Ms. Walker spent 37 years with the city, and she is being recognized today, I hate to say this... say this because she's leaving. She's done a fantastic work for the city. Her loyalty and devotion to this community has set a sample for many of us to emulate for the future of 37 years. She's been a recreation leader throughout the city. She's helped many youth that sometimes are troubled, like I was when I was a kid. I was just bad. On the outside, I was good on the inside. But it's my pleasure today to say thank you to a person who's created so many things, instrumental in developing some creative art programs and perform community outreach to all of the citizens of the city of Tampa. And for 37 years, I hate to ask you, how many mayors you've worked with?
I didn't count them.
I figured that would be the answer, that's why I asked. Some of them, you know, most of those mayors are here, and it's an honor to have you with your smile and the way you've always been so courteous to everything that the council aides, usually the ones that call the department, and you've always responded in a positive manner, and a lot of times we were able to get what we needed done. And you had just been a community asset for many, many years, and we hate to say that you're leaving, but I understand that you, you want to go out and just help out other people in the community without getting paid.
I did.
So that's not even trade, I think. So if you did that, how come we paid you then? I'm only joking with you, but thank you so much for the 37 years of service. It's an honor to be here. I know that my aide's been here just a little longer than you, but she does a smile as pretty to you do. My pleasure to tell you thank you for your 37 years of service. Congratulations, God will, and God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to thank the city of Tampa and Parks and Recreation for their great support over the years. You know, we have a grassroots art program, and we introduce kids, adults, everyone to get in touch with their creative spirits. You know, from the visual arts, we have four art studios, to our Creative Arts Theater, Children's Theater, and an art reach program that, that kids get to go to the Straz and learn guitar and ukulele. So we have a lot of work to continue to do, and I have a fabulous staff and a wonderful manager that will make sure that all of this continues. And I also wanted to thank my family. Thank you so much.
Anyone from council? Thank you, ma'am. Next, Councilman Goode's.
Morning, Council. It was my honor and privilege to welcome the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Tampa Alumni Chapter, Metro, Tampa Alumni and Metro, is here, correct? Why don't you all come on? I'd like to... You got the two presidents?
Well, we got four presidents.
Four presidents, okay. Well, come on up, president.
We have the Tampa Iota from University of South Florida.
Oh, South Florida.
Uh-huh. And then we have the Ty Iota from University of Tampa.
All right. That's a new chapter, isn't it, Tampa, University of Tampa?
Yeah, we've been in existence, they've been in existence for a while.
Mr. Chairman, it is my great pleasure to give this commendation presented to the members of Tampa Metro Polite Alumni, Tampa Alumni, Cap Iota, Ty Iota Captains of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. This is Delta Day.
Delta Day's at City Hall.
But I had to bring my red cap and jacket.
We accept it.
Tampa City Council, applause, Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, on its dedication and success for over a century, and thanking them, and the Tampa chapter members for all they have contributed to our community, nation, the world, over the years. With the millennium theme, joy in our sisterhood, power in our voice, and service in our heart, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority is faithfully committed to the five-point pragmatic thrust of economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. And the organization's current national president and CO, Beverly Smith, is leading the charge for Delta to remain the forefront of action as a voice for those in need. Tampa City Council welcomes and joins you on this Delta Day, the 16th day of May 19. Thank you, ladies, so much. Mr. Chairman, we've got to get some big work, because, man, I tell you, I know I wear glasses, but it's hard to read, but let me say thank you on behalf of all of the nine, me being a member of Cap Iota Incorporated. It's my pleasure and honor to have met with you yesterday and hear your concerns about, and your interest about the city of Tampa. It was my great pleasure. So, we have the president of which chapter?
Tampa Metropolitan.
Tampa, we'll let you say a few words.
Okay. I am Sharnell Williams, President of the Tampa Metropolitan Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and I would like to thank you for recognizing us this morning and allowing us to come in and have a seat at the table to have the community discussions that we need to have. We're here to support the council, and we're looking for the council to support us as well.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Brenda Webb Johnson, First Vice President for Tampa Alumni Chapter, and on behalf of our President, Alicia Warren, we thank you so much for this commendation, and we too will be working collaboratively on all of these issues, and we appreciate your attention.
A little nervous, come on, you're going to get the hell out of here. You're the future now.
Good morning, and I'm Marta J. Gibbs. I'm representing the Cap Iota Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We just want to thank you all for your support, your awareness, and bringing us here today and your accommodations. Thank you.
Good morning, all. My name is Cory Laneman. On behalf of the Ty Iota Chapter, and I just want to thank you all for allowing us, for hearing us out and for all your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, being a good caper, when I got to my desk this morning, I saw one, I said, no, there are two chapters. I know that much, but I didn't know the, the young ones were coming from the university. But what we're going to do is, we're going to give each grad chapter one, and I'm going to make sure I have my legislative aide get vote university chapters a plaque as well, saying that you have been here to Tampa City Council, and you can hang it on your walls at your respective places.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from council? Just, if I may, I mean, I know many of us met with you all yesterday, and it was a real pleasure to discuss the issues, and, you know, before I met with you all, I did some research, and I, and I think I told some of the folks we're here that I met with that, you know, some of the, the past members of your sorority, I mean, people like, I read Dorothy Height, Congresswoman Stephanie Tubbs, Shirley Chisholm, and, and Merle Evers-Williams. That's a very impressive name. Those are great names that, that stand behind you and that's a great legacy to, to live up to, so God bless you guys for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we go onward to the next one, Councilman Miranda.
So it's my pleasure to introduce you, Susan Valdez, our distinguished legislator in the state of Florida. She came on strong from the school board, and she knows how to handle the chores for the citizens she represents, not only in this district, but when she votes, she votes for the whole state of Florida. Susan?
Thank you very much, Councilman Miranda, and good morning, honorable city council members and Mr. Chairman. You know, today we started the council meeting with, with the prayer and then by also honoring our veterans, and it's my pleasure today to present to you a tribute that we presented on behalf of the Vila Brothers, which are local homegrown veterans. And, and it's my pleasure and honor to, to read and present a tribute to the family that we did for them in the State House of the state of Florida. So if you would indulge me in reading this into the record, thank you very much. And this is a tribute, Vila Brothers Park. Whereas Vila Brother Park in Tampa is an important landmark of local history and culture that is named after seven local brothers and serves as a gathering place in the community for the honor and remembrance of local veterans. And whereas Vila Brother Park was dedicated to the Vila Brothers, Joe, Willie, Wilfredo Jr., Hector, Robert, Denio, and Tony on July 2nd of 2005. And whereas each Vila Brother served our nation bravely in the United States Armed Forces, serving in conflicts from World War II to the Gulf War. And whereas the two oldest Vila Brothers joined the Marines soon after the bombing of Pearl Harbor, and each of their brothers followed them into service over a period spanning five decades, serving in the Marines, the Navy, and the Army. And whereas in honor of the Vila Brothers' service, Vila Brothers Park holds a unique status in the community as a place of honor and remembrance for all veterans of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas, in addition to serving as a landmark of local history, honor, and remembrance, the Vila Brothers Park is a source of enjoyment and recreation for residents and visitors now. Therefore, be it respectfully proclaimed that Vila Brothers Park is recognized as a place of historical and cultural significance for the residents and visitors of Tampa, and the extensive military service of the Vila Brothers is honored and commended. Signed by myself as Representative Susan El Valdez from District 62. And I'd like to give this particular tribute to the Vilas that are here today. Honoring our veterans is such a, an important thing to do, and when we have the opportunity to, to do so and, and honor a place where it's specifically designed for that purpose, it's such an honor to be able to do this and present it to this distinguished family, which I know they probably are saying, why are we doing this? Because they're very humble people, very, people that aren't looking for recognition or commendations, but other than the fact that they are Tampa residents, they are part of our community and have been for many, many years. And as we, we honor them in their service of family and their services in the armed forces, protecting us and maintaining our freedoms, it's such a pleasure and honor to remember that we have one of those distinguished families still within our community. So it's my pleasure to introduce the Vilas.
Hold on. Come.
Hi, Martha. There you go. There you go, sweetheart.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm not on a timer today, so I'm happy about that. But good morning, City Council.
Good morning.
Good morning, Susan. Good morning, family and friends. On behalf of the seven Vila Brothers and the Vila family, we are honored to receive this award. I would like to introduce myself. I'm Martha Vila, and I was married to Hector for 67 years. These two are my brother-in-laws. One didn't come, Tony didn't make it, but here's my brother-in-law, Denio Vila. They're the only two brothers left out of seven. They're here to keep me straight. The Vila Brothers' story has captured the hearts of Tampa, and hopefully this park will grow and become a symbol of the true meaning of love for country, as exemplified by these seven men and so many others. Susan, on behalf of Joe, Willie, Wilfred, Hector, Robert, Denio, Tony, thank you for this wonderful commendation, as the park being of historical value for this community, city, and state. It will be treasured by us. Thank you, City Council, for hosting this award and your support for the park. Thank you, Sandy, for your commitment to make this park a reality. Thanks to all of you that support the park, and again, thank you, Susan, for this wonderful tribute. You have truly honored us, and we're sincerely grateful. Most of all, God bless our America.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I just want to thank the city parks and the recreation for their honor that they have given us over here in Tampa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, thank you very much for, for allowing for this presentation to be awarded and for your support of the Vila Brother Parks, and hopefully we can continue to develop that park so that then we can really have little guys running around and honoring and looking at some of our local history as well.
Thank you.
Councilman Meniscalford.
Mr. Vila?
Mr. Vila.
Yes.
Don't, don't thank us. We thank you and your brothers for your service, your sacrifice to this country, to our community. We're so blessed to have the Vila Brothers and the Vila family here in Tampa, that we can call you, you know, our native sons. The park is just a, a little something, you know, for, for everything that you and your family gave, so we're eternally grateful. And thank you, Mrs. Martha Vila, for being here. You know, you're, you're a wonderful advocate, a wonderful spokesperson for the family. I had the opportunity to meet Hector years ago. I had the honor of meeting Hector years ago, and I'm sorry that he's no longer with us, but his memory and the memory of all the, the other Vila Brothers, and of course, your show here, we're grateful for that, will live forever, and, you know, thank you for, for everything that you all have done.
We thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Carlson.
Mr. Vila, I also would like to thank you for your service and your brothers for your service, and thank you to your family. Thank you for what you did and also for inspiring us for the future. Ms. Vila, you mentioned Sandy Sanchez. I would just like to thank Sandy and all the, the, the great number of, of community members in that community who love your family so much and have inspired all of us and taught us all the lessons, and hopefully that will continue for generations now because of the park, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I just wanted to say thank you, obviously, very much. You know, correct me if I'm wrong, we're all, the Vila Brothers were all first-generation Americans?
Yes, we all were born here.
In, but first generation?
Yeah, the first generation, all the family.
Yeah?
We were.
And that's very poignant, because, I mean, you, you, throughout history now, today, 100 years ago, people always questioned the loyalty of immigrants, and I think that's something that's very, very poignant. And in our city, we honor many veterans, and many of them came from immigrant families like y'all's family, Valdemiro Lopez and others, and, and the Vila Brothers' name, I think, goes in the city of Tampa with great names like Valdemiro Lopez, Robert Saunders, and, and other people who wore the uniform and stood for, for great things that we're all appreciative of, so thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next, we go forward with public comment. If anyone wishes to speak, please come forward, three minutes a person. Stand up if you're able to do so so that we can know that you will be speaking. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
All right. Good morning, Tampa City Council. My name is Diana Klein. I am here today on behalf of our preborn neighbors here in Tampa, and I'm here to let you know that there are over 200 babies that are murdered every week in the city of Tampa, and we need to change that. We need to criminalize this murder. I have in front of me here a diagram, a medical diagram that shows how the babies are killed. This is a baby at nine weeks in utero, where the baby killer goes in and with a cannula and suctions the baby out, and the baby's literally brutally murdered, alive, arms, limbs, head is decapitated. All of this is happening right now in the city of Tampa every week at the rate of 200 a week. This needs to stop, and you guys have the jurisdiction to be able to stop this. This is what the baby killer assistant has to put the baby body parts back together to show that they've got them all. And you can see on the left, you can see the, a baby who's nice and safely in his mother's womb, and we need to change this. We need to stop this child's sacrifice that's happening in Tampa and across the nation. And you, council, this morning, with all the prayers, with all the honoring of our American veterans and having our wounded warriors being acknowledged and being encouraged in their life, you guys have to know, freedom begins in the womb. Without freedom in the womb, we don't have freedom. If, so, it's up to you, members. We need to start a grassroots to end what Roe v. Wade started in this Holocaust of over 61 million children today across the nation. This has to end, and I'm waiting for it to be on the agenda, and I'm ready to talk to each one of you about this, about defying the federal tyrants that are saying that it's a woman's right. It's not a woman's right to murder her baby. We need, there is lots of information. I go out in front of the murder mills here in Tampa. And there's lots of help for women here in Tampa who are with child, and it's time to end this. You have the ability to do this on a grassroots level. You can defy the federal and the state to start establishing justice, makes Tampa a sanctuary city for our preborn babies, our future children in Tampa and across the nation. We need that from you. I'm asking that for you, and I'm going to be getting in touch with each one of you. I expect to have a meeting with each one of you. I want to know what each one of you believe about this, if you believe that we need to end this bloodshed and that we need to take a stand and be a voice for these little babies, because every life matters. Every single life matters. And we need to, because children are a gift from God. Like I said, find out more on my website, and find out about the missionary work that I do for the preborn.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
At lovethepreborn.com.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
My name is Bishop Michelle B. Patty. I stand before you on behalf of Tampa citizens representative on the Hillsborough River Technical Advisory Council. The council is coordinated and managed by the Hillsborough County City Planning Commission and is made up of citizens from Hillsborough County, Temple Terrace, the city of Tampa, and professionals from local, state, and federal organizations, all tasked with taking care of our Hillsborough River. The TAC, as I call it, meets monthly to review planned projects along the river to ensure they meet established standards and that the flows and the health of our river is maintained. This time of the year, because of minimum flow requirements, one of the latest projects recently completed to help maintain flow down the river below the dam is the Minimum Flow Control Gate. This gate was built into the dam on its south side. It is a sliding gate type of panel which can be raised and lowered under the control of our water department to meet minimum flow requirements below the dam. If anyone would like more information, let me know. I will be happy to meet with you and share the details of this and any other projects. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, please.
Good morning. My name is Bishop Michelle B. Patty. I stand before you on behalf of thirty-plus children. They can't be here today because they're middle school, high school, and college kids on their way to college, but they thought it would be robbery if we did not come down and thank the two council people that supported them. They would be going on a trip this summer to Blizzard Beach because of two outstanding council people. So they wanted me to bring this certificate on behalf of Pramford Christ to Councilman Guido Maniscalco. We would like to present this to you, also to Joseph Citro. They say, "Thank you so much." They wanted me to bring this to you guys. These are our future leaders that you thought it not robbery to support them as they go forward in life. So we'd just like to present this to you.
Bishop Patty, it was my honor to help you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And to Guido, and we know Joseph had a tight schedule that night, but Guido, you came out. They was disappointed that you had to leave before they could present you with that, so they gave me the task to come down this morning to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. And thank you, Councilman Maniscalco and Citro, for your generosity. Next, please.
Good morning, Council. I just want to congratulate you guys for being elected and getting ready to lead our city to a new future. My name is Sam Harris. I'm with Sam Gin Residential Commercial Realty, and I'm here to talk about opportunity zones. Our city has nine to twelve opportunity zones in the city of Tampa that we can reshape East Tampa, Drew Park, Progress Village, Temple Terrace, Suitcase City, through development and recognition that this is a viable way for us to build new capital stacks, to rebuild these communities so that they're vibrant and that there are more jobs and more stability in those areas. The tax law of 2017 allowed for opportunity zones to take private capital and invest into these distressed communities. So we would like to invite you out to what we call the Q O Z Expo on June 3rd and 4th. It's going to be like-minded individuals like yourself, CPAs, attorneys, industry experts, coming together to help us better shape Tampa in those opportunity zones. And I would like to thank you for your time and congratulations on your election.
Yes, sir.
Sir, make sure, before you leave, you see my aide, so she has the information. I'd like to see if I can get her to attend that event.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mine also, please.
I will just.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry.
Oh, yeah, sure. Mine too, please. Yep. Just, I guess, send it to all of us, if you would, please, sir.
I'll send it to everybody.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good morning, Connie Burton, the Chair of the NAACP Housing Committee. The mention of my hero, Harry, I mean Shirley Chisholm, was a great thing this morning and always ensured me that I'm on the right side of history. One thing that Shirley Chisholm was titled as being un-bought and un-boss. Always served the interest of her district to the tune of being re-elected, I believe, for seven terms. But one of my greatest heroes that I must mention this morning is the work of a brother that some frown and some smile about. And in some of his great writings, he would tell us that we could get confused sometime because folks will have things switched around in terms of making us think it is our problem when we see our communities in such a distressed situation. May nineteen, nineteen twenty-five, born Brother Malcolm X. Yes, our hero. And so when I see what's happening in this city, it gives me to question, how do somebody that is so, so rich end up with a hundred million dollars in community redevelopment money? Vinnie, everybody talk about how rich he is. And then when we read in the paper, and I'm beginning to wonder, is District Five, and I don't know, could be wrong, is it mapped in such a way that it includes parts of downtown that now parts of the real distressed community don't get the resources, but all the resources end up down here? I keep coming in saying that what our community need is a real transformation, and what I hear constantly when I come in this council is that you have the ability to do so. You have the ability to look and see how neglected a community has been in the past administration and say that you want to be on the right side of history and do something different. We do not want roundabouts coming out of our CRA money. We see that city staff persons is eating up a big lump of that money in salaries. We even see that a police detective has received ninety-four thousand dollars in salary from our CRA. We have too many issues inside of East Tampa, and we need a full transition, a Marshall Plan, call it whatever you want to, but we want to be lifted. For the last sixty years, we've been dealing with the same issues and where we just get bits and crumbs and crumbs and crumbs. We believe it's a new day. We have a new council. We have even a new mayor. Things cannot, will not continue in the same path. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, please. Sorry, I thought I hurt somebody. Yes, sir. Councilman Carlson.
Ms. Burton, we've had some conversation before, and I think, I second what you said. We've got a new mayor and we've got a new council, and we all said on the campaign trail that we want to work on every part of the city and we want to make every part of the city prosperous, so I look forward to working with you more on that, as I think most of the city council, if not all, do.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I think we all amen to that. Well said, sir. Next, please.
And Tzad, Tampa, Florida. Yes, a new council, and it's a new mayor, but I've been around here since Sandy Freeman, couple of Grecos, other individuals that's been down here. Mayor Poe, that's a long time. And black people, African people, get the same jerk around we've been getting for sixty years. Nothing has changed. They give us the same pie in the sky, dumb programs. I remember when my parents and grandparents used to line up down here to stand in line to get a house, to do a lottery for a dollar and all that nonsense. That's what they have for African people. Absolutely, positively, nothing. And it's the same thing they have for us now in East Tampa, over in District Five. It's the same thing. And that comes from a certain kind of ongoing hatred, ongoing hatred towards African people. And they busy to label you. Now, they don't like you calling them, they don't like to be labeled with offensive names, but they busy to label us drug dealers, criminals, radicals, all kinds of stupid names because we're trying to survive. Racially hateful, insensitive names because we're trying to survive. And you come down here trying to survive and trying to represent your community even as a lone voice in what they do. Then they attack you personally. Three million dollar lawsuit from Construction Services for building a perfectly permitted legal house. About two million dollars on a wall. Hundreds of thousands of dollars on a car, a show car that's legally parked on your own private property. It's a certain kind of hatred they have for black people. Twenty-five hundred dollars in illegal fines, parking tickets, a person who tried to walk a straight rope. That's hatred. And everyone's talking about a new city council and a new mayor. We don't see no changes in our neighborhood. Police doing the same thing. Oh, you didn't stop at the sign. Your windows tender too dark. Look like I think I smell smoke in your car. Look like the lights in your bicycles not working properly in the daytime. A certain kind of hatred, and that has to change. And what I would say is, what I'm here to say is today, from Chief Dugan, Barbara Lynch, Charles Dummett, if he's still with the Parking Department, Detective Sarita Baker, Vicki Pratt, and Ernest Mueller, those are some names that I'm announcing publicly that need to get fired from this city for the nonsense and the illegal stuff they do.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else? Oh, yes, sir. Councilman Gudes.
Mr. Manat.
Yes, sir.
For years, I've seen you come to council, and some people don't understand that it's not anger that you're possessing, it's passion at times because of some injustices that have been in our communities. I know some of those things. But I would say to you, this is a new council. I truly believe it will be a new day, and I'm prayerful that it will be with the council that we now have. But I'd ask that you reach out to us, get involved with us, and help us so we can understand. A lot of times, if people don't know to know, and they have to have that experience, and experience is our best teacher. When people don't experience certain things, they don't believe in certain cultures, certain sensitivity issues, how people live. And I'm a firm believer, you have to experience things to know them. So if you, I'm saying that I would like you to reach out to me and hopefully you'll reach out to the council members. In that way, we get an understanding, and maybe you can help us, help those understand where we need to go and how we need to get there, if you could do that for me, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay. Are there any requests by the public for reconsideration of any legislative matters? Okay. Now, for the items pulled, I want to make sure, do we have anybody here from city staff waiting for those? We have one. Okay.
Two.
Two. Two. Okay. Let's go ahead and we'll go through the consent agenda, then we'll, so that you all can go forward, we'll go ahead. Councilman Citro, if you could.
Yes, I'd like to move items, Agendas five through eight.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, Chairman Gudes.
I'd like to move items, move items number nine through thirteen.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Gudes.
Move number nine.
We removed number nine? We did? Oh, yeah, you're right. Okay, sir. If you want to amend excluding number nine.
I'd like to move the motion to amend for removal of number nine, going through items ten through thirteen.
Yes, sir. We have a motion by Councilman Gudes, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, I believe it was. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, Councilman Dingfelter.
Yes, I'd like to move items fourteen through sixteen, items eighteen and nineteen, and items twenty-one through twenty-three.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelter, a second, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, and I just wanted to quickly comment in regard to item nineteen, not pulled, but since it's on consent, just to express my pleasure in regard to nineteen, that it was included as a sheltered market solicitation for three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to encourage minority and other disabled business enterprises. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to the various departments that are involved in that, and that's good.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelter, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, sir. Move items twenty-four through twenty-six.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, Councilman Carlson.
I'd like to move that we pass items twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And lastly, Councilman Maniscalco.
Yes, I'd move items thirty-two and thirty-three.
Did you pull both of those?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, then, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have called on you, Mike. My originating mistake. Okay, so we'll go now to the pulled items, which I believe are seventeen, twenty, thirty-two, and thirty-three. If you want to come forward.
Twenty.
Twenty. Okay. Go forward.
Eric Weiss, Waste Water Department Director, here to answer any questions you have on item twenty.
Yes, sir. Okay. Item twenty?
That was mine.
Yes, sir.
As you all know, we're not allowed to talk to each other because of sunshine laws, and also, when I was running for office, one of the big concerns that my constituents, a lot of leaders, had in the community is the way purchasing was done in the past eight years in particular. So if I see something that looks like it has one bidder, I can't help myself but to ask questions about it. On number seventeen and number twenty, I don't have particular questions about the bids, but I would like to ask, in both cases, how widely were they advertised and, you know, why did we end up with one bid? I think in number twenty, there was a protest to, or the other bidders decided that they didn't like the bid in some ways, something like that.
On item twenty, which was five large generators, there was, I think, at least six bids. The first two were disqualified because they qualified their bid. They didn't like the indemnification and other terms and conditions, and redlined out and made their bid contingent upon that, which makes them ineligible because it's not a playing, same playing field for everybody. So the third low bidder is still within our budget, and that's who we're recommending for this work.
And then on seventeen?
On twenty.
And then on seventeen also?
Seventeen is not Waste Water Department.
Councilman Dean.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric, for joining us this morning. I had a little chat with Mr. Barrett and with Eric before the meeting today in regard to this item. Specifically, this item is four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, a lot of money, to have a six-month rental of some very, very large temporary standby generators to stick them next to treatment facilities out in the community and make sure they keep working in case there's a power outage. That's basically what it's for. So my question to Mr. Barrett and then to Mr. Weiss was, if we're doing this in several consecutive years, I know that whenever I go to Home Depot and I start renting something like week after week, pretty soon I think to myself, "Why didn't I just buy it?" And that was my question to Mr. Weiss. So my last question to you guys was, and I know it was short notice and I apologize, was what if we had just asked this company or a similar company, you know, "Can we just buy these since we are doing this?" So, um, but my question to, to Mr. Barrett and then to Mr. Weiss was, was if we're doing this in several consecutive years, I know that whenever I go to Home Depot and I start renting something like week after week, pretty soon I think to myself, why didn't I just buy it? And, um, and that was my question to Mr. Weiss. Um, we, so my last question to you guys was, and I know it was short notice and I apologize, was, uh, wha, what if we had just asked this company or a similar company, um, you know, can we just buy these since we are doing this for two or three consecutive years until we can get a permanent solution? Uh, and how much that would cost as compared to the four-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand?
So we did an analysis. This is our second year of doing this. Um, the cost of buying them last year...
We have another year or two to go?
Yeah, so there's five big generators. Uh, two are in construction phase and will be done by the next rainy season, and the three are in, uh, engineering design phase, which should be done the year after that. Um, when we did our initial analysis last year, the cost to buy these was a little over three million dollars.
As just...
For these five. If you bought all five last year, knowing that we were gonna get rid of our, two of the biggest ones after this year, then two more after that, it made sense to just rent those.
So even though we're renting them and they're sitting there for six months, it's still only about a, a fifth of, of, uh, the total cost? And we're not talking about the permanents, the permanent installation?
No, the permanent ones are more than that.
Okay.
Because you gotta build stands to keep above the hundred-year flood plain, fire suppression, and, you know, a more permanent installation.
The gas tanks.
Gas tanks.
Okay. Thank you, and I appreciate the due diligence on that.
Anyone else? Anyone wish to move the items? Or, or wait, I'm sorry, Councilman Carlson.
Number seventeen, we have somebody else coming up.
Yes.
I'll move, uh, second, twenty. Mr. Guido.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, we have, we have a motion by Mr. Guido, a second by Mr. John, uh, all in favor to move item, um, this was twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Is anyone here for seventeen?
Uh, his Water Department.
Brad Baird, Public Works Administrator. Um, Mr. Chuck Weber is still in with the mayor right now, so I'll answer any questions you have on item seventeen.
Yeah, uh, I, I was the one that pulled that. My only question, again, getting back to the purchasing process, it says that, uh, you all used a Manstar and no other vendors responded. Do you have any idea why that wasn't, besides the Manstar? Did you all, uh, use any other outreach to other vendors?
Uh, no, we did not. This, this is the only company that, uh, manufactures this lines laker. There's, there's no other company, uh, that, that does it. So, um, we had to go sole source with this item.
And just as a follow-up, Mr. Chair, the, um, it was interesting to read the backup. The, the, the issue was compatibility, I think, because, because they can, they can take, they've already got one and they had another one that died, so they can take this new one and slip it right in to, to where the old one was because it's the same exact machinery. And I think that that was the, the issue on the single source.
That was correct. Yeah. So you read the single source certificate? Yeah.
Anyone else? Anyone wish to move the item? Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion to move item seventeen by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Moving forward, I believe twenty-seven was pulled?
I think twenty-seven and twenty-eight are the same, right?
Okay, there you go. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Yes, ma'am.
Vanessa McCleary, Housing and Community Development Manager. I'm happy to answer any questions on this item.
Yes, sir.
And I imagine it's probably similar to, to, uh, to what Bill had, uh, pulled it for as well. Eighteen oh-six Ellicott, eighteen oh-seven Ellicott, uh, across the street from each other, appears. We're giving, and this is what jumped out at me and probably Mr. Carlson as well, we're giving, uh, the property without any, uh, compensation back to an LLC. And, uh, so that jumped out at me in regard to, to that. Looking at some of the backup, it looks like affordable housing, so I'm glad you're here to explain a little bit more in detail about, you know, us giving a, giving a lot to a company. And specifically, my question is, uh, what are our assurances, what kind of assurances and guarantees do we have that they're going to build, uh, the, the affordable, uh, the affordable housing? How much will that, that home ultimately sell for in the community, et cetera?
So we have a property disposition policy for affordable housing projects where we will provide the lot for free to a developer as long as they commit to making the home affordable. So we have design criteria that they have to meet, uh, two-bed, three-bedroom, two-bathroom, a minimum of twelve-hundred square feet, can't be sold above a hundred-and-sixty dollars a square foot, has to be sold to a low to moderate income family, and we place a lien on the property, um, for the affordability period. So this is in keeping with the state requirement that, um, communities make land available for affordable housing. And this is the way that we are getting others involved in, um, helping us to develop affordable housing.
And what is that affordability period?
Ten years.
Ten years.
Oh, sorry, five years under this one.
Councilman Carlson.
If I remember correctly, the, the cap was two-twenty-six?
Yes.
Is that considered in your criteria affordable?
Yes. And so determining affordability, it's also in the state statute, and it's, uh, ninety percent of the, ninety percent of the selling price of homes in the county. So we have to check with the county appraiser's office every year to get that number.
When you look at that, do you also look at the impact that it may have on other houses in that area?
Yes.
And what the, I mean, what, like what the average cost of a house is in that area?
So on that, we are not, um, setting the price, the developer or whoever's doing it, because the houses have to appraise. So your appraisal is gonna make sure that it is in keeping with, um, but we are trying to help move, um, home prices up because some of our neighborhoods are lagging way behind.
My, my main question was, how often does this happen and what's the bidding process? Were there other bidders on this, uh, property?
So we have had these properties, um, these were NSP properties. We've been sitting on a number of properties for, in some case, between ten and twenty years. So they have not been on the tax rolls for ten and twenty years, and we're now getting them back onto the tax rolls as well as building affordable new homes on infill lots.
And the question was about bidding?
Oh, sorry. And how many, um...
No, bidding, yeah, bidding and how many?
Was it, was it put up for an R P?
It's not bidding. We have them listed on our website, so someone would make an application. Part of that application process, they have to show us that they have the money to build the home. They have to show us the design plans, their marketing plan. Um, this particular nonprofit is working with Salida's House to identify a home buyer for the home.
And, and maybe this is another discussion or workshop another time, but, um, in, in your evaluation, let's say on the low side, these, uh, properties are worth twenty thousand each, I'm making up a number, uh, that, let's say that's forty thousand dollars that could be put into another pool for other kinds of affordable housing. And, and, and your department's analysis, is that a good, uh, the right way to handle this as, as compared to other investments?
Yes, because when, in most cases, when we're building affordable housing, we are subsidizing those projects anywhere typically from about sixty to a hundred thousand a project. For this project, I'm putting no money in, I'm only providing the lot. So the subsidy that helps them to keep the price down is the lot. And they have to show us that they have all of the additional, the other funds. So when you were talking about us building a thousand homes in a year, we don't have funding to build a thousand homes. And we're trying to get more and more people involved in the affordable housing process, understanding that there is a market there and that there is demand for these homes once they are built.
Uh, Councilman Citro.
From my own information, these, these two properties, uh, were, how were they acquired by the city? Were there liens against them?
Yes.
Code enforcement liens?
No. These were acquired through the NSP grant, um, when we were picking up, um, foreclosed, uh, dilapidated properties.
How long, how long were they available before City of Tampa picked them up? You said they've been on, off the rolls for ten years. How long ago did the City of Tampa acquire them?
About ten years ago.
About ten years ago?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Gudes.
I want to go back when you said two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Eighteen oh-seven...
Affordability is, sorry, affordability is not the sales price. Affordability is the mortgage payment. So I know that we keep talking about the sales price of homes, but the other day, we had a home that sold for a hundred-and-eighty-three thousand and their mortgage payment is seven-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. So you may look at the sales price, but then there are other programs that provide subsidies that bring that down. What we're trying to make sure is that homes are being sold at market, and we're not devaluing because when we devalue homes and we sell them below market, we're causing distress to the other people in those neighborhoods.
I, I hear you, I, I hear you, Vanessa, but what, my concern is, and what I hear is when people are building these new style homes or gigantic homes, and for those people who've been there thirty, forty years, uh, they go into another tax bracket.
No, they don't. Because in Florida, your tax rate can only go up a certain amount each year, and your tax rate that's built up depends on what you sold your home for. So if they haven't moved, their taxes aren't jumping all of a sudden because new homes were built in their neighborhood.
Well, those...
It's based on their values.
I, I know those...
But we're allowing their values to come up and creating equity and building wealth in those communities.
Well, I, I can tell you that when you look at that number to blighted communities, that's, uh, that scares people. And...
But it's a false scare, and that's why we're trying to educate them and also make them aware of different...
And if I may, let, just, uh, let Councilman Gudes finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please, thank you.
And, and if that's the case, then we need to do more in educating the public and especially those blighted communities when they see those numbers. Um, I know that area very well, and, uh, when you look at the houses in that area, I, I don't see two-twenty-six. I just, and when you throw out two-twenty-six at a house that's been being built, that scares people. And again, you, you throw out these, uh, numbers and you say, this is how it works. A lot of people in these communities are uneducated, they don't understand how the market works, and we have to educate people to that. So we need to roll out something so the community can be aware, because when I see that, that scares me.
Anyone else?
Can I say one?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I'm a big proponent of affordable housing, and, um, I look forward to working with you and having you tell me your whole plan. I would recommend that we have a workshop or some kind of discussion so we can all talk about this, so we know where we all stand. I think we're all in favor of affordable housing. Um, this is kind of dropping out of the air for me, and, um, I, I'm not in favor in general of government subsidies and, uh, and I don't like the concept of government giving land to someone even though it's for a good cause, uh, but, uh, and so I don't know that I can support this particular one, and that may not matter, but I look forward to discussing with you your overall strategy because I know you do a great job and, um, look forward to, um, you know, supporting other things that you do in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Um, I, I definitely can support, uh, support this. I think the, the, the answers, I think it's important that we ask these questions, and that's why we pulled this item and we've had, we've had a, a good, robust discussion on it. Um, I, you mentioned cat, quickly, that I, I pointed out that it was an LLC, but you said it was a nonprofit?
Mm-hmm.
This particular com, outfit or company?
Yes. So when they are developing the housing, typically they will create an LLC and develop the housing under it. So CDC has, um, several different LLCs, the Housing Authority, um, they do that when they're developing the housing and it's for, um...
So who's the parent, what, who's the parent company then?
The, I know that this is one that Dr. Patel created, um, because we were able to get him interested in affordable housing, and he's worked with Habitat, and now he's actually formed, um, his own nonprofit that is developing housing as well.
Okay. All right. Well, that's even, sounds like even, uh, more reason for me to support it, but I, you know, I think it's a, it's a laudable program, uh, these, I remember when the, um, what was it called? The NSP program came in? That was the, the, uh, Obama's, uh, uh, what was it? What'd they call that? The...
It was under, sorry, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program?
Right, right.
Or, oh, um...
Anyway, it doesn't matter, but that was during that period of time, they were trying to infuse money back into the communities, uh, from the federal government, uh, at the beginning of the recession, and the NSP program was very helpful to the city, uh, especially some of these areas.
Yeah, it was actually started under George Bush.
Oh, good for him. All right. I stand corrected. Um, so, anyway, uh, but Dr. Patel, it's great that he's involved, so I can support this. Thank you.
And anyone else? Uh, and, and yeah, uh, if the council wishes to, um, have a, a workshop on affordable housing, someone can make the motion at the end, and I think that's a, a great idea. You know, I always say that one of the big crises in our community is that most of our city employees, people who work for the city, can't afford to live within most parts of the city. And that's a real issue. These are people that are, uh, uh, often living paycheck to paycheck with City of Tampa paychecks, raising families, raising kids, looking to put those kids through college, God willing, and they can't afford a house and within city limits. That's a problem. So we got our work cut out for us, without a doubt.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion to have a workshop regarding affordable housing.
Um, sure, we can do that. Um, second. And let's, um, we can do, who seconded that?
I did.
And, uh, in terms of date, um, to the clerk, do we have, uh, I guess, a date available for the next available workshop?
[inaudible].
Work with everyone? Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gudes, a second by Councilman Carlson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, and now as to items twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Do we have a motion? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that June is homeownership month, so I love the idea of having that workshop in June, and we will be inviting you to a number of different events.
There you go. Thank you. Do we have any thoughts on items twenty-seven and twenty-eight?
I'll move both items.
Oh.
I'm sorry, forgive me. I interrupted.
Nothing?
No, I just wanted to make sure that, because that motion was sent, the motion was to set the workshop for June twentieth, and now you're taking up the motion on the items themselves.
Yes, okay. Uh, Councilman Dingfelter, did you move that, sir? Any second.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Councilman Dingfelter, a second by Councilman Miranda for items twenty-seven and twenty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Um, and then who is here for thirty-two and thirty-three? I'm so sorry.
Motion carries with Carlson, voting no.
Thank you, ma'am.[1565.23] Thank you, ma'am. Next, 32 and 33, Ms. Duncan.
Good morning. Jean Duncan with Transportation and Stormwater Services.
Deanna Marshall with the Purchasing Department.
We're here to answer any questions on item 32 or 33.
Good morning, ladies. Thanks for joining us. Good to see you, Jean.
Good morning.
So my question on 32 and 33 is sort of a big-picture question. As you know, it's been about eight or nine years since I've sat up here, and I have heard and read that during that period of time, across the whole, the whole city and various departments, and including yours, Ms. Duncan, I'm sure, that we lost a lot of employees due to attrition, well, basically, I guess, in response to the recession, in response to tightening up the ship and surviving the recession, that, and some employees got laid off. And I'm sure some of those probably came out of transportation. You can correct me otherwise. But, so that sort of, that's why I pulled these items, because, and one of them, I guess, is stormwater, and the other's transportation. But, so item 32 is going into these sediment control structures, inspecting them, maintaining them, digging them out, I would assume, digging the sediments out, that sort of thing. It sounds like the kind of thing we used to do perhaps ourselves with our own employees. And then item 33 similarly is emergency sign repair and replacement. And I know we used to have a lot of folks in our sign shop, you know, doing that kind of work. So in a very big sense, I'm wondering, you know, is this the kind, are these the kind of, you know, projects, items that we used to do ourselves, and we now contract out?
Well, on the stormwater item, the bath of boxes, it's true, we did have, lose personnel and so forth, but this is a specialized cleaning that we do for these boxes as part of our EPA required permit. Even if we had the staff, additional staff back to do the work, because of the recent stormwater service assessment that we've received, we appreciate that extra money, we will always be in a position that we're going to be outsourcing a lot of our work. It just wouldn't make sense to try to fully absorb all of that with in-house staff. So we're always going to have those outsourcing needs, because we have so much funding now for maintaining our stormwater system. What we try to do is separate out the more difficult or technically challenging things from the regular routine, pipe ditch cleaning and so forth. And this is one of the items that we would look to a contractor to do with specialized equipment to handle for us. So this is renewing an existing contract that we have. We're happy with the service we've gotten so far this past year with this contractor, and it'll be something we do consistently, because we have to report the findings back under our environmental permit.
So, and I appreciate that response, but more specifically, is this, I mean, you've been here quite a while, I guess, perhaps when, when I was here last time, you weren't in charge of stormwater, but now you are. But do you know if this is the type of thing that we used to do with our in-house personnel?
Yes, we've done some of it, but again, we're always going to have to have the contractor availability because of the frequency we now need to meet with our permit, and the fact that we've got funding to do more frequencies than we had in the past. We'll never be able to do that fully with just our in-house staff.
And do we, do we analyze our, do we analyze our ability to do this, not in terms of the staff that we have, but do we analyze the cost-effectiveness of having, you know, our own staff doing this?
Yes.
As opposed to paying a for-profit company to do it, and the profits that they receive over and above, you know, the, our regular employees doing it?
Yes. Now that we've had the service assessment for a couple of years, we're getting a little more information, where we can start analyzing and finding that sweet spot, what's the ideal in-house staffing numbers, and what's the ideal separation of outsourcing the permits? There's sort of that, that good balance of both. So now that we have had the assessment in place, where we have the additional funding, we can make better decisions about to what extent we want to expand the in-house staff, and to what extent we want to continue to have an outsourcing option.
Okay. Maybe you can get back to us with that, that evaluation analysis. And how about the sign repair, same, same issues?
Sign repair is a different situation. This is just being proactive and being at the ready for in the event that we have a, some kind of a storm situation. We put this contract out based on the type of items that we're going to need. We made sure they were FDOT and FEMA reimbursable. So it's a zero-dollar contract, but it will be available in the event we have a, excuse me, catastrophic situation.
It's kind of like our trash removal, our debris removal?
Debris removal, yes. So we're ready to go with the contractor in the event that we need it, and we'll refresh those quantity numbers in another year if we don't end up using it.
So they're in standby, they're in standby, they're in standby mode?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councilman Carlson?
I didn't pull this one, but I had one question. If, I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, but if I remember correctly, number 33, there was only one bidder, and could you just, sorry to ask these questions every time, but could you just tell me what the process was to try to get other bidders and why there was only one?
The solicitation was advertised on Demandstar, which I mentioned a little bit earlier. Demandstar is a nationwide bidding, e-bidding platform. So what we do is we look for vendors who have identified themselves as providers of that commodity, and then we blast it out nationwide.
So besides Demandstar, you also proactively go to people who could potentially qualify, or?
If we know that there is a local supplier, we can add them in, whether they're in Demandstar or not, we add them in as a supplemental, so that they're notified via email.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on these items? Okay. It's the pleasure of counsel on items 32 and 33.
I'll move both. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco to move items 32 and 33, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we go to item 34. Would ask that someone please motion to schedule this item.
It's scheduled for August 22nd, 2019, at 10:30 a.m.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we move to our first public hearing. I would ask for a motion to please open our public hearings.
Some move.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman, I believe it was, Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we move to item number 35.
Good morning, counsel. Kristin Moore, Legal Department. This was a motion by a city council last year to add some comprehensive plan language that clarifies our existing policies protecting surface waters. This is on second reading. It has been transmitted to the state and has come back. It went on first reading a few weeks ago, and it is back on second reading. I'm available if you have any questions on this from me.
Any questions from Tampa City Council on item 35? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item number 35?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Dingfelder, would you, sir, please take item number 35?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I'll move an ordinance amending Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element proposing policy language on... Shall we?
Just a motion to adopt, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. Motion to adopt on second reading. An ordinance amending Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element proposing policy language on when fill activities are appropriate for the purpose of development, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, provide an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
I'll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Roll call.
Number two, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Vote and record.
Oh, vote and record. And does everybody vote? It's our first time doing this.
Yep.
Motion carried unanimously.
Isn't that pretty?
The what? Amen?
How do you decide between roll, sorry, how do you decide between roll call and...
When it's second reading, you push the button. Yeah. And I forgot this for second reading, how could I forget? Next is going to be item number 36.
Did we announce that?
Oh, I think they did. Did you?
Okay, thank you.
Item 36, please.
Good morning, City Council. Morris Massey, Hillward Henderson, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 3700 here in Tampa. On behalf of the University of Tampa, this is a second reading of an ordinance amending the future land use category for a little over, between 15 and 16 acres of the university campus, changing the future land use categories, which are various, to public, semi-public, or semi-quadruple public. The bulk of the campus is already under that future land use category. This is to make the campus under one unified future land use category. Again, it's the second reading. It's already been transmitted to town massy, and they had no objections, and we appreciate your approval. I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from council? Councilman Dingfelder?
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Do you have a map that shows the, generally, the area we're talking about? University of Tampa is thriving tremendously over the last 10, 15 years, and we're proud to have them as a, as a partner in our community. So, Oriana's here. Oriana's, if you would.
Sure. Kennedy Boulevard here. You'll see in blue, that's the public, semi-public portion of the campus. These are properties that the university has acquired over the last 15 years, along, primarily along the north side of Kennedy Boulevard, further to the west. But here, this is Boulevard right here, running to the middle of the campus, north-south. And so generally, this is to bring the balance of the campus into the same future land use category. We were recommend, we just went through a PD rezoning, and staff actually recommended that we do this, to bring it all into the way of future land use category.
Okay. So it's, does the university anticipate going, going further? I guess, is that the ball field down there in the corner?
The ball field is right, the lacrosse field is right here.
Okay. Do they, does UT anticipate going further up Kennedy, or is that kind of where they're thinking about stopping, or?
The university has, I mean, there's still some parcels that are in what I call the donut hole here that the university does not own, it potentially could acquire in the future, so we may end up coming back before you, asking for those to be rezoned and the plan to be changed. The university's also acquired some other properties on the other side of the railroad tracks, but that's getting into the West Tampa and North High Park area. And until we come forward with a more firm plan, what we want to do and kind of interact with those community groups, we do not feel it was appropriate to amend the comp plan or the sequel rezoning of those properties. So we're, there are some old warehouses back in there that the university has acquired.
So, so in regard to, like, some of the changes, it's from UMU 60 or RMU 100, which has a large capacity in terms of, you know, 100 units per acre, 60 units per acre, but then we go into sort of this nebulous category of public, semi-public. Are there, is there a density associated with those?
There's a density associated with it, and that, that's part of the issue. Some of these tracks are very small, even though they are, have a high density associated with them. Some of these tracks will be developed as dorms potentially, so there could be an issue with density on that parcel in particular. If you spread it out over the whole campus, there wouldn't be an issue. What is, what, what we're governed by and what, and really what the governing features are, are in the PD. And then the PD does have height limitations and density and student population and buffering requirements all in it. We can't go over 120 feet for any structure. There's a total, university enrollment cap of, I think, 12,000 or 12,500 under the PD.
So the PD, so the PD is for all, the whole campus?
Right. And also, the comp plan basically says for public, semi-public, yes, the PD's for the entire campus, and the public, semi-public, future land use category also contains a statement that while there's no density limitation or cap per se, that any development within that category has to be compatible with the area that you're developing. So the university is bound by that as well.
Okay. Yeah, in regard to compatibility, I think the university's doing great. I, you know, the new dorms are beautiful. I think that, that fence next to Lacrosse Field is really a detriment to Kennedy Boulevard and everything the Mississauga Center tried to do for Kennedy Boulevard, and, and I would hope someday we could, we could have some improvements in regard to that, that 100, 100-foot-tall fence. But anyway, other than that, I'm supportive of this item.
Anyone else from council? Thank you. Anyone here from the public to comment on item 36?
Move to close.
Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, second to close, seconded by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor? Any opposed? Councilman Goode, if you, sir, could take item 36.
I don't think it's a motion to adopt. Ordinance being presented for second reading, an ordinance amending the Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property located at 110 and 114 North Boulevard Avenue, 115 North Edison Avenue, 429 802, 901, and 909 West Kennedy Boulevard. 108 North Boulevard and 1102 West Boulevard, North B Street, Regional Miss, Miss Use 100, Urban Mix Use 60, recreational open space to public, semi-public, providing for repeal or owners and reflect, providing for durability, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Dingfelder. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman, move to open items 37 through 50.
Thank you, sir. We have a, I'm sorry.
We passed 10:30, excuse me, sir, if I may.
Yeah, you're fine.
We passed 10:30. We also move 51 through 56.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Okay, if you could swear in the witnesses, please. For everyone who's here to testify on these items, please stand up and raise your right hand.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but...
Good morning, City Council. Ryan Manassie, planning and...
I'm sorry. Are you going to make an overall statement about all the hearings?
For 37, 38, and 39.
Okay. Because before you do that, if I can, just for the purposes of the record, Mr. Chairman, as you know, we have four newly-elected members of City Council, and these hearings that you are about to hear for second reading, those newly-elected council members were not present for. So my purpose now is to ask the newly-elected council members if they had, if they have reviewed the record, and whether you will be prepared to vote at the conclusion of today's second reading. So may I just do it individually? A yes would suffice, or a no would suffice, either way, whichever is the case, Councilman Dingfelder?
Yes, I had a chance to review the record and I'm prepared about it.
Councilman Goode?
Yes.
And Councilman Citro?
Having sat in, in the audience for these three, yes, I'm ready.
And Councilman Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you.
You should ask the older one, maybe they weren't a coma.
Good morning, council. Ryan Manassie, planning and development. Items 37, 38, and 39 are before you for second reading. Certified site plans have been turned into the city clerk, and staff is available for any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you very much. Item 37.
I'm Ben Johnson from Amanda Bonfitt, Simmons, Hewitt, and Kane. I'm the attorney of record for the petitioner, the applicant. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Otherwise, I think that everything went smooth at the initial...
All right, are there any questions for the applicant? No?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Councilman Dingfelder?
Yes, sir. I believe it was item 37 was a, what do they call it, Little Microbrewery, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Right, and I, so I think that's kind of exciting. It looks like it's right there on the south end of Tampa Heights, near the, near the interstate. So that sounds all, you know, pretty cool and hip, neither of which I am. But what I was wondering, it appears there's quite a few waivers in terms of distance separation, and I can't remember, there were a few others that I noticed.
Parking was the other, parking was the main.
Parking was a significant waiver.
Yes, it was two waivers. It was a distance waiver and then a parking waiver.
Right, although, although in that area, that's, I think that's a good area in terms of being close to the heart, the heart terminal and that sort of things, you know, in terms of public transportation. So, so tell me about that.
When we presented the first time, and I'll reiterate it, because I know there's four of you, and congratulations on everybody being up there, but we're relying a lot on, there are 10 spaces on the premises. They want, I believe it was, it was 40, we're asking for a 78% reduction, but we're relying heavily on the new availability of public transportation, which we'd also include Lyft, Uber. This is close to the Riverwalk. The Tampa Downtowner comes to this area. This is right when you come under, coming from downtown and you go up Florida Avenue, this is right when you go under the highway. Had they been on the other side of that highway, it would be significant less parking required. We believe that in, you know, there are multiple other breweries, bars, and restaurants in that area that all survive and receive parking waivers, maybe not this big, but they survive with the availability of the Uber, the Tampa Downtowner Lyft. Now, the Riverwalk is right there that allows people to come up and down the Riverwalk. We do not believe that the, while it is a large parking waiver, we do not believe it to be unreasonable. We don't believe it will create any burden on the traffic in that area.
What, what would the parking requirement be if it was on the south side of the interstate? Roughly, I mean, not, I mean, would, is it...
Mr. Manise would be able to speak to that better than...
Yeah, because that's an interesting distinguishing factor between just above or just below, and now that downtown is extending north the interstate, maybe we need to consider expanding, expanding that.
Ryan Manassie, planning and development. For this particular case, it was zoned differently than the CBD zoning district, which does have different requirements for different types of uses. I believe microbrewery still has a requirement for parking. It's not as large as some of the other zoning districts, but for this case, in this case, we have to review for the zoning requirements for that zoning district. They were required to have 46 spaces, they provided 10.
Right. Just my curiosity says if it was in the CDB...
It'd be, it'd be less. It'd probably be significantly less.
I mean, like, significant? Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions for the applicant? No. Anybody from the public wish to speak on item 37?
Move to close. Second.
Motion to close from Councilman Miranda with a second, Councilman Citro, all in favor?
favor?
Aye.
All right. Councilman Seater, if you could read item thirty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'd like to do is, an option, an ordinance approving a special use permit S2 for alcohol beverage sales, small venue consumption on premises and package sales for off-premises consumption, making a lawful sale of beer, wine, at or from that particular described section, excuse me, concern lot, plot, or tract of land located at fourteen twenty North Florida Avenue, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in section two, providing that all ordinance is, or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, providing an effective date, including all waiver requests.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Seater, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. Please record your votes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. We move onward to item number thirty-eight. Applicant here. Hi.
Hi there. I'm Patricia Ortiz. My address is twenty-eight ten North Central Avenue, and I'm here on behalf of item number thirty-eight. We're proposing a liquor store at the northwest corner of Bush Boulevard and North Thirtieth Street. Liquor stores require a minimum distance of separation equal to two hundred and fifty feet between other establishments selling alcohol and residential uses. We're asking for small waivers to those distances of separation. Bush Gardens is located right across Thirtieth Street from us, but the actual entrance to this limited access park is about a mile away. The nearest residential property is two hundred and thirteen feet. However, the route a reasonable person would take to get from point to point is greater than that distance, that required distance of two hundred and fifty feet. I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from council members? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone here from the public here to publicly comment on item number thirty-eight?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Miranda, if you sir could take item thirty-eight.
I'll take it, but I think it's Mr. Maniscalco's turn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're right.
Thank you very much. I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance approving a special use permit S2 for alcoholic beverage sales, small venue package sales, off-premise consumption only, and making lawful the sale of beverage regardless of alcoholic content, beer, wine, and liquor, at or from that certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at twenty-nine twelve and twenty-nine fourteen East Bush Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in section two, that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, providing an effective date.
Second. Motion by Councilman Dingfelder.
I can't support this item. I reviewed it prior to coming today, and, you know, when I look at the standards on the staff report, it speaks to, well, look, if I can refer everybody to page three, that I'll go through some of them briefly. The use will ensure the public health, health, safety, and welfare. Of course, that's always there. Item three, that's compatible with contiguous and surrounding property or a public necessity, it's in conformity with Tampa Comprehensive Plan, will not establish a precedent or encourage incompatible uses in the surrounding area. And I guess my point is, especially along Bush Boulevard, I believe that we have serious issues in the Bush Fowler University area. I don't believe that a package store is the solution to these issues. Specifically, I believe that item five, that, you know, doing this will establish a precedent and additional incompatible uses in the surrounding area. There is residential, I think within, I think the testimony was several hundred feet away, so they're, I guess, probably on the backside of this. I recognize that this is a, you know, to a certain extent, it's a tourist area, but also to another extent, it's a residential area. And I think there's plenty of liquor package stores in the area already. And specifically, they're asking for a waiver of the distance separation requirement, and our code has a distance requirement, separation requirement in there for a reason. So we don't have a proliferation of package stores in this case. They're asking a reduction from two hundred and fifty feet to two hundred and thirteen feet. So it doesn't, it does not meet the code, and I do believe we have discretion, limited discretion, but discretion on our part to deny this petition. That's why I'm not going to support it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Maniscalco, the second, I believe, by Councilman Miranda. All in favor...
Let's write that. Thank you very much. We move onward to item thirty-nine.
That's me. I'm Maritza Astrokiza, and we are bringing arts back to Drew Park. For those who remember, Drew Park had a lot of art, had Zenda Grotto, a lot of activities, and DiCaprio's, and Little Theater, and the Gorilla Theater, and we have a new location we're calling All Art Studio, and therefore, we're here to ask for your approval to move forward our project.
Okay. Any questions from council on item number thirty-nine for the applicant? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item thirty-nine?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Seater. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I believe we're at Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item thirty-nine, file number AB2-19-11. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance approving a special use permit S2 for alcohol beverage sales, small venue consumption on premise only, and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcohol content, beer, wine, and liquor on that certain lot, plot of tract of land located at forty-seven twenty-five North Esprit Street, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in section two, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next onward to item number forty. If anyone here is for item forty.
Good morning. Mary Samiego, planning coordination. Items number forty through forty-eight are all second readings for rezonings and special uses from your April eleventh evening City Council hearing. All required changes have been made and are with the city clerk. For item number forty-nine, the applicant was not able to make their required changes in a timely manner, so I request, and the applicant requests, that you continue that second reading to your June sixth, nine thirty a.m. hearing.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
Which one?
Forty...
Which number is that?
Forty-nine, sir.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Yep.
Forty-nine, sir.
Did we have a motion?
Move to move out of forty-nine to the June sixth. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Seater. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, so we're ready to proceed with forty through forty-eight.
Thank you. Okay. Item forty, if anyone is here for item forty.
Hello, council. I'm James Catalano, two-one-one-nine West Cass. I'm here on behalf of fifteen twenty-nine North Eighth Street, and the purpose of our petition was to rezone the property back to its original zoning from APD.
Anything further?
No, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Councilman Dingfelder?
Thank you. Mr. Catalano, thanks for joining us. I read through it, and it's an interesting, you know, process. You know, things change, people change their minds, and that's sort of things. So we're going back to where we were originally. But what, remind me, what is the use? Is there any active use on that parcel? Especially, what jumped out at me is to go back to IG. So what...
What had happened is the owner had taken on a tenant that was going to be a place of worship, a non-denominational church. The church didn't prove to be viable, and in that time, the PD limited the use of that property in perpetuity for a place of worship. So the owner decided it'd be, in his best interest, to rezone it back to a general zoning, its original zoning.
So he'll go back and look for a new tenant that's IG?
In IG, yes. And then he'll just hold on to the RS fifty lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone further? Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone here from the comment here, or strike that, anyone here from the public here to comment on item number forty?
Move to close.
Have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Carlson, if you sir could take item number forty.
File number REZ eighteen dash one-two-six, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of fifteen twenty-nine West North Eighth Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification PD, plan development, place of religious assembly and business professional office to IG and Industrial General, and RS fifty residential single-family, provided an effective date.
Okay. With motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move onward to item number forty-one. Is anyone here for item forty-one?
Good morning, council. David Singer with Shoemaker Law Firm, one-on-one East Kennedy Suite, two-eight-hundred. Congratulations to the newly sworn in members. Nice to see you up there. We're here for second reading on an item that passed unanimously. This is Bush Boulevard and two-seventy-five, mixed-use project, hotel apartments, restaurant, office space, some food kiosks activating the stretch of Nebraska from a sidewalk perspective. Passed unanimously in front of council, and we're here to ask for your approval.
Any questions or comments from council members on item number forty-one? Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item number forty-one?
Move to close.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Just a comment, Mr. Singer. I pass by this pretty often, and I'm very excited. I spoke to the depressed nature of certain parts of Bush Boulevard. Obviously, your client has taken a big, big, very visible parcel there, and has some exciting plans for, you know, redevelopment. And I think this is in your district, Mr. Chairman, and so I congratulate in advance of the vote, of course, congratulate your client and wish them well, and invite us all to the ribbon cuttings or whatever.
Thank you. Councilman Goode.
Depressed area. I think people have been asking for years now, what are we going to put there to revitalize the area? I think this is going to be a good thing, especially people coming up that interstate looking for a good place to stay and eat. So I think it's going to be a good thing to have.
Anyone else? And I obviously agree with the sentiments of my colleagues. You know, I think that a lot of private businesses, such as your client, are waiting for the public sector to step up and stop the generational abandonment of Bush Boulevard. You take a look at, somebody had mentioned the old Sea Wolf Restaurant. Anybody here remember Sea Wolf? Yeah, that's, I think it was four-one-one-five East Bush. Yep. And when I was a kid, I believe that was kind of a fancy restaurant, that when you're a kid, everything's fancy, right? It's very true. But you look at that area now, there's no Sea Wolf. And maybe given some of the things we know about it, that's a good thing, right? But in many ways, that's a bad thing. So I think that the private sector is waiting on the public sector to stop its abandonment, and I think this is a wonderful gesture. So thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Move to close.
Okay. Yep, we have a motion on the table by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and was it Councilman Dingfelder, if you could take this item, sir?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Regarding rezoning nineteen dash oh-seven eight twenty East Bush Boulevard, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of eight twenty East Bush Boulevard in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification CI commercial intensive to PD plan development hotel residential multifamily restaurant business professional office, provide an effective date.
We have a second. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Can I make one comment?
Oh, yes, sir. Councilman Carlson.
If I make a comment after we voted, then it's not in the record of that. Is that correct?
I've done that before.
Just wanted to get Rebecca's approval.
That's my belief.
I just wanted to make a philosophical comment. As I said on the campaign trail, I've traveled a lot all over the world, especially in Latin America, and we think of downtown as our front door. Bush Boulevard really is our front door because there are millionaires and billionaires every day that are going to Bush Boulevard, and we need to do a better job. And I think council's looked at it before doing this, but I'm really excited that this gateway to, our gateway to the world is going to be invested, and hopefully, no one will take the Mel's Hot Dog sign down.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Councilman Seater.
Councilman Carlson, you should have seen the smile on Mr. Curtis' face when you made that statement.
And I've done that before, Councilman Carlson, when after it's done, I go, let me make a statement now, because it's not legally applicable, so that's funny. Okay, next we go to item number forty-two. If anyone here is for item forty-two.
Mary Samiego, I don't believe that the applicant is present, but I ask that you proceed with the second hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from City Council for forty-two? For staff, okay? Anyone here from the public here to comment on item number forty-two?
Move to close.
Okay. We have a motion to close by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Goode. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Goode, if you sir could take item forty-two.
Sir, item forty-one, motion to adopt, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of forty-seven oh-three West Lawn Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one for, from zoning district classification RS sixty residential single-family to PD plan development residential single-family detached, providing an effective date.
Motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. We move now to item forty-three. Is anyone here for item forty-three?
Good morning, council. Sam Nashag, twenty-fifteen North Central Avenue. I'll reiterate the congratulations on the new council members. Here to represent twenty-fifteen, changed from RM twenty-four to PD, and willing to take any questions.
Anyone, or strike that, anyone from council have any questions for the applicant? Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. And I don't know if this is for you or for staff, but so as I read this petition, it's ten units with, and I didn't have a copy of the PD in front of me, but it's ten units, and it speaks to nine parking spaces?
That is correct. We're asking for a reduction from the sixteen required to a nine, one of those being a handicap spot. Our intent for that was to not pave any additional space and to keep the handicap spot. The tent spot might be available, but we would lose that handicap access, and we're looking at having a place that's people-friendly, welcoming to anybody of any level of disability, and it's a very walkable, friendly area.
The ADA is great, but I guess it's a little unusual for me to see ten units with nine spaces, or effectively maybe eight spaces, eight plus one space. You know, I mean, at a minimum, I would think that any unit would or should have its own parking space. You know, how do we justify not at least having one space per unit?
Yes, sir. We're looking at it as a very pedestrian-friendly area, Tampa Heights, being able to walk down to Armature Works and Franklin Avenue. We know that there's a risk as the seller, obviously as the developer, that somebody may not want a unit if they're not going to be able to park, but we're aiming for a new age of people, the millennials, who don't necessarily have vehicles, who are using Uber, or getting away with public transportation, and we want to encourage that.
So these are...
As a backup, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
Most of our units are six hundred square feet. They're micro units. They're aimed specifically for that generation. There's going to be a horticultural aspect to it. We're calling ourselves Green Wall, and we're looking for that type of community where people are not really looking for that. We're going to have bike racks and other things to encourage that kind of things. As a last resort, it can't count, I understand, by code, but there's plenty of street parking available. We do have all three sides. We have the Ross side and the Lamar side that are both on our property that provide street parking. I understand it's not by code, but that's about, you know, eight or nine additional spots, that if a guest did run into that issue, there is a place for them to park. Again, fully understand.
Yeah, and I hear what you're saying in regard to, you know, the sixteen that are required might be excessive. It might be more suburban, you know, or a little less urban, perhaps. Are the nine spaces designated, like, you know, unit one gets space number one, et cetera, or are they first come, first served?
As of right now, they're going to be first come, first served, where we don't plan and designate them. As a condo, you know, it's going to be condos for sale, so if we sell it, we'd have to deed each of those parking spots, and we'd rather keep it a community area.
So in your mind, or on your documentation, this is a, this nine parking spaces is common, from a real estate perspective, will be common ownership?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Not underneath any particular unit or anything like that?
Correct. It'll be a common area of the entity of the condominium association.
All right. I guess we'll see how it goes.
Anything further from council members? Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item forty-three?
Move to close.
Okay. Motion to close by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Maniscalco, if you sir could take item forty-three.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of twenty-fifteen North Central Avenue and twenty-ten Lamar Street. In the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RM twenty-four residential multifamily to PD plan development residential multifamily, providing an effective date.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant here for item forty-four? Anyone here for item forty-four?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, council members. Congratulations to the new members. My name is...
My name is Aimele Muslimi, 9812 Morris Glen Way. I'm here for rezoning property located at 2736 West Bruce Street from PD to RS 50.
Thank you, sir. Any of the council members have any questions for the applicant on item 44? Okay. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item 44? Okay. Motion to close? Okay, we have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Goode, all in favor? Any opposed? And I believe next is Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. File number REZ 19-20, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 2736 West Bruce Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classification PD Plan Development Semi-Detached Single Family Residence to RS 50 Residential Single Family, providing an effective date.
Okay. Have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Dingfelder being absent at vote.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we'll move onward to item 45. Is the applicant here or anyone here for item 45?
Mary Samaniego, for the record, I do not see the applicant for item 45. I will ask that you proceed with the hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from council members for staff for item 45? Okay. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item number 45 for public comment?
Move to close.
Motion by Councilman Miranda to close, a second by Councilman Goode, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Councilman Miranda, if you, sir, could take item 45.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 45, file number REZ 19-21, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of 1452 West Bush Boulevard in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classification RS 50 residential single family to CG Commercial General, providing an effective date.
Second. Motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Dingfelder being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. Next, we move onward to item number 46. Anyone here for 46?
Good morning, Council. My name is Victor DeMaio, 4925 in Henderson Parkway, Suite 195. I'm here representing Burnt Steakhouse and the Epicurean Hotel. We, this particular, we went through two ARC hearings and a city council hearings, all receiving unanimous votes. This is to preserve a historic home that's directly across the street from the Epicurean Hotel, that we're moving into the historic Hyde Park neighborhood, and we've worked very closely with the neighbors and all the different neighborhood associations around Burnt Steakhouse. The option initially was to tear down these three structures, and instead, we're going to restore them. The house will be moved. Paul Seere Construction, who's done a lot of work with historic buildings, the Cuban Club, Nebo City, the San Francisco West Tampa, and also Kim Hedlin with Wild Architecture, who did the historic remodeling of Hillsborough High School. So these 300-year-old historic buildings will be preserved. The two apartment houses next to this house we're moving will be restored to its 100-year feature. This house will be moved, which we're going through a tremendous amount of expense to do, to preserve the home into the Hyde Park District on a triangular piece of property, which is part of the project. There's currently a duplex, a modern duplex that was built probably 20 years ago. That's going to be donated to Habitat for Humanity. They're going to strip the house for the doors, windows, appliances, everything in the current duplex, so we can move this house in here. The house will be fully restored. They're going to remove the Miami windows and the vinyl siding that wasn't around in 1920. So it will be fully restored, then sold to a family who wishes to buy the home. So that's pretty much it. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer any questions you may have about it. The reason we're moving the home is because, as you know, Burnt Steakhouse is well-famous. People come here from all over the world to visit Burns, and now we're finding that they're staying at the Epicurean Hotel. They're running at 100% occupancy. Once this house is moved, we're planning to do a little extension of the Epicurean with some more rooms across the street. All the visiting hockey teams, for some reason, of all the hotels in Stockton, Tampa, they want to stay at the Epicurean, I guess because they like to eat good steaks and drink wine, I don't know, but the Epicurean Hotel has done extremely well, and this will be a nice addition to the neighborhood, and we're working very, very closely with, to be sensitive to the neighbors about what we're doing. So that's pretty much why we're doing it and the reason for doing it, and we appreciate your vote of approval on second reading.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from Councilman Dingfelder?
Thank you, Mr. DeMaio. Just curious, in regard to response, I'm sure you've been in contact with the various affected neighborhoods and any response or lack of response?
No, no. PJ Summerall, who lives directly behind the property, she's the president of the neighborhood association, the Historic Hyde Park Neighborhood Association. She's been very supportive of everything we're doing. We're trying to be as sensitive as possible to the neighbors, and that's why we're doing this. Rather than tear down these three historic buildings, we're preserving them with a lot of expense. The apartments, for example, are going to be restored for long-term rentals. People want to rent a place with a living room and dining room for a week, they can stay over there across the street, so that'll be...
This particular structure is a, I assume it's in the district?
Yes.
It's a protected structure in terms of the district?
Exactly.
Instead of applying for demolition, you're moving it?
Exactly.
And restoring it?
And we can only move it into the Hyde Park Historic District. We couldn't move it anywhere else in Tampa. So it can only be moved in there, and we had to buy this piece of property, for example, that the duplex is on now, which is a PD. We went from a PD to a PD, even though it's a single, this is a weird single-family home PD, but we're doing it because of the, it's a triangular-shaped lot, as you can see, and it's very unusual, so we had to squeeze it in as best we could. And we're actually, for the neighbors, they're getting rid of a duplex and getting a single-family home, so. So the property alone cost us over half a million dollars, and we're tearing it down to move a house into that home, so, into that, into that lot in Jotun.
Tell Mr. Laxer and his partners, we appreciate his efforts to, you know, respect the historic district.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Anything further from council members?
Any questions?
Nothing further. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item number 46? We have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Goode, all in favor? Any opposed? Councilman Carlson, if you, sir, could take item number 46?
File number REZ 19-23, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 2114 and 2116 West Jotun Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classification PD Plan Development Residential Single Family Detached to PD Plan Development Residential Single Family Detached.
Second.
Providing effective date.
Motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Dingfelder, please record your votes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we move onward to item number 47. If anyone is here for item 47?
Good morning, City Council and all the City Council members. I just brought my son with me today. I'm here on the, on the item number 47. That's two properties located at the 4011 and 4013 North 38th Street, that Jackson Heights area. The property at the 4011, it's zoned RS 50 right now, and we want to do RM 6, RM 24, because we're planning, in the future, we're planning to build a fourplex there. And on the property that's 4011 right now, there is a duplex there right now. So on the 4013, we're planning to put a fourplex.
And, sir, if you may, we have your name.
My name is Dennis.
Dennis, what's your last name?
Natruskin.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And what's, and what's your son's name? Not formally, just...
What's your, what's your name?
Alexey.
Alexey.
Alex, what a nice kid. How old are you, Alex?
Three.
Ooh, good for you, big fella. That's great, good to see you. Any, any questions from council members to the applicant on item number 47? Yes, sir.
It's unfair to us to, you bring your secret weapon there. Beautiful.
He's learning, he's learning the trade from me, all the steps, like how to build the house and everything, so.
Beautiful. I have a three-year-old grandson, but right about that age. But seriously, I have a little bit of concern when I was looking at this project, because it does, it does indicate, and I'll rely on Mr. Goode's, perhaps, I think it's your district, but it does indicate, I think in the staff report, that some of the surrounding homes, perhaps to the side and the back store neighbors, is, is, is single-family. And, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, or staff can perhaps inform me a little bit better. And are we introducing something? Now, I realize it's a little, you know, it is a little bit close to MLK and that sort of thing, and I don't know what's going on in that parcel that's directly in between your parcels and MLK, and I'd be curious about that unusually trapezoidal-shaped parcel there. But, but anyway, so it appears you're introducing a multifamily quad onto that parcel, and is there any precedent, you know, on, on either of those block faces, North Bay or IDA or 38th, for the multifamily? And let me hear from staff on that first, and then you can, you can chime in.
Mary Samaniego, Planning Coordination. This property is in the R 35 land use category, so it's slated for medium intensity residential development.
Right, I read that, but that still doesn't necessarily, it's a rezoning, and we have to be consistent and compatible, too.
Right, I understand that, sir. Um, excuse me. Here is the future land use map and the zoning map for the property. The subject property is in purple and highlighted. This is Community Commercial 35 from MLK, and then the intensity goes back, again, R 35, R 35 here, and then this is the R 10 land use category to the far north. Because he's requesting the rezon to RM 24, which is a Euclidian zoning district, any project that he develops would have to comply with all standard zoning requirements.
Okay.
Under that, under that zoning district.
Maybe I wasn't clear. What I'm more curious about, and it's hard to see on the aerial, because all I can see is a bunch of trees, but what I'm more curious about is the existing fabric of that, of those streets and those blocks, not the future land use map and, you know, what, what, what folks up the street might think it should be. What I'm asking is, is what is it? What is the character of the, is it? I read somewhere that in the staff report, it mentioned that it's a, a single-family area. Now, I see a larger structure there.
This is a commercial structure. This is an existing duplex. This is a multifamily structure, multifamily structure. This is a vacant lot, and then these are all single-family houses.
This is vacant lot two here.
Yeah, that's a vacant lot.
Okay, and that's exactly what I needed to know. I couldn't tell that from the aerial, but that's very helpful. Thank you.
And that's Street Two, that 38th Street, that's a dead-end street, so it's kind of like ends right in the middle of my second property. And that area here, like on the left of it, like people put dirt there, trash there, we like cleaned it like so many times there. I'm trying to show the people, you know, why, like, why do you, like, they put like old furniture mattresses in there. The city of Tampa came, they cleaned out all of the stuff there, helped them and everything, and people still continue doing it, you know? That's why I'm trying to clean that area and make it like nice and appealing to people to live there and to stay there, so.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair.
Any further questions or comments from council members? Councilman Goode?
Well, Mr. Dingfelder, you right off of me with that area. And there are just about every day. And it is a blighted area, very blighted. I know we've got the veterans' homes that are on 39th Street that kind of beautified a little bit of 39th Street, but I think the project in itself, beautification is everything, and we need, we need housing. So just letting you know off of me with that area.
And on the 38th Street, I mean, I have two lots there. We're going to build like two single-family homes, like affordable housing there. So we're going to build, like, I got the lot there, I split it in two, and I'm going to build two single-family homes there, so.
Thank you, sir.
It's right in the same area.
Anything further from council members? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item number 47? Motion to close by Councilman Miranda? We have a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor? Any opposed? And for 47, Councilman Dingfelder, if you feel comfortable taking that one?
Sure. In regard to rezoning item 19-25, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 4011 and 4013 North 38th Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classifications RS 50 residential single family and RM 16 residential multifamily to RM 24 residential multifamily, provide an effective date.
Any seconds? We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Anyone here for item 48?
My name is Joseph Diaz. My office is at 3242 Henderson Boulevard, and I'm here on behalf of the owner of the property located at 604 West Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. We're seeking to rezone that property, which is at the southwest corner of MLK and Lynn, from an RS 50 to a CN use.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council members to the applicant on item number 48? Okay, anyone here from the public wish to speak on item 48? Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor? Any opposed? Councilman Goode, do you feel comfortable taking item number 48, sir?
Yes, sir. Item 41, motion to adopt, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 604 West Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classification RS 50 residential single family to commercial neighborhood, providing an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, sir. Next, we move to item number 50. If anyone is here for item 50?
Julie Hardy, Legal Department. I need to request Council move item 50 from their agenda. The attachment is incorrect, and I need to go back and resubmit it back to the beginning for...
We're just striking it?
...in the future.
Just strike it?
Yes, please.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, which I believe is a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Next, we move on to our 10:30 quasi-judicial public hearings for item 51. And just to make certain, is anyone here in the room who plans to testify or speak today who has not been sworn? One. Okay, sir, if you don't mind standing up.
If you can softly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Mr. Mickelley, go ahead.
Morning, Council. I'm representing Jason Accardi on item number 51, and this is not ready to be moved forward. I sent you a letter requesting a continuance for 30 days. We have to work out some easement and access language that hasn't been perfected, so we respectfully request a 30-day continuance. And the staff has a date in mind, they'd like to have that continued, too.
Barbara Lynch, Land Development. I think we have to go to 627 on this, because I think 30 days...
So move. And before, any questions from council or comments?
I did have a comment, Mr. Mickelley or staff, either one. When I was looking at the back of material, if we could see a specific map when you come back that, that shows this a little clearer, I didn't, I didn't have it in my backup. No, no big deal today, but any, any of these vacatings would be helpful to have a very, you know, detailed map so we can, some of them have it, some of them don't, I don't know why. But anyway, thank you. That's my, my motion to continue.
Thank you. We have a motion to continue by Councilman Dingfelder, I believe, a second by Oh, yes, thank you. I apologize. Anyone here from the public wish to speak solely on the continuance of item 51? Okay, yes. Is anybody, oh.
The gentleman stood up, and I want to make sure he understands what's going on.
Okay, yes, sir. And thank you for the clarification, Councilman Miranda. We are continuing item number 51, moving to continue. Do you wish to comment on that at all, sir?
Different item.
Okay, okay. Just making sure. Thank you, sir. Okay, we have a motion to continue, or
What time, again, the date and time, please?
6:27, I assume, 10:30.
10:30 AM, thank you.
We have a motion to continue by Councilman Dingfelder, I believe, a second by Councilman Goode's, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, next, we move to item number 52.
Barbara Lynch, Land Development Coordination. I want to congratulate, congratulate all the new council members and welcome back Mr. Dingfelder. As I said, I'm Barbara Lynch. I work in land development. And I'm here for VAC 1932. The applicant is requesting to vacate an alley in East Tampa that is south of 18th Avenue, north of 17th Avenue, and runs from 15th Street to 16th Street. And I have a, a map for the overhead here. Not sure why, okay. And the petitioner's property is in red, and the alley to be vacated is in yellow. It's an old cigar factory, I believe. And I have photos of the alley looking east from 15th Street. The alley's blocked by fences at this location. This is the alley looking west from 16th Street. You notice there's a car parked in the alley that is owned, I believe, by the residents there. And this is the property looking west from 16th Street, and then a shot of the site from 15th Street. Staff has no objection to the request. They do need an easement for TECO. And then there's a condition to give an easement to the owner at this location so they can continue to use that for parking.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Dingfelder?
Yep, Ms. Lynch, thank you for your kind words. And you read my mind because that person is parking there. Now, in a typical scenario, they would lose half of that
Right.
That alley. They'd have to get a much narrower car.
Yes.
But, but you guys have taken care of that, or?
Yeah, that was a request by transportation.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from council for staff on item 52?
The addendum. The substitution is on the addendum.
Okay. Anyone here from the public here to, and sir, are you? Okay, anyone here from the public here to comment on item number 52? If so, come forward. Oh, I'm sorry, the petitioner. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. Go ahead, sir. My apologies.
Yeah, I am the petitioner. My name is Alan Dobbs. I'm at Ford Design Studio. I'm the agent. I have been sworn. I am here with Charlie Hiddinger, who is the, the owner of the property. I'd like to say I've, I feel extremely privileged to be part of this great project that's getting underway here. This building's been neglected, as you all know, for, for a very long time. And so they bought this property on both sides of the alley and some surrounding properties. And so they're redeveloping the building and also the whole property. And we're gonna, we're working with TECO. All the power lines is, is why we have to keep the easement for now, but that's gonna be removed. The portion of the alley on the east side was a little tricky because they're using it for parking, even though it's not code compliant. But, but Charlie can talk to this. We're getting a cross-access easement, I believe it's called, so that my client has the right to use the alley when they need to, but also the adjacent property owner can use it for parking when they need to as well. So I'm gonna let Charlie talk about this project a little bit.
My name's Charlie Hiddinger. I'm managing partner of PGCF LLC, purchased all the land. It's an honor to be in front of you today. Congratulations, everybody. The project, the scope of the project is gonna be one that has a large impact on the area. And it's gonna have a large impact in a very positive way. If you've driven by the slot, you've probably noticed that it is a dead spot in an otherwise, in an area that's otherwise got a lot of life. So this easement that we're requesting with our, with our neighbor, if we're allowed to vacate this alley, it'll allow us to utilize our lot much more effectively.
Thank you, sir.
If you have any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Dingfelder?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all, we've all been curious about that cigar factory for, for many years. And did you all recently purchase it in the last couple of years? That's great, because the prior, the prior owner didn't look like it was going anywhere. And what, what is your, what is your plan? Is it residential? Is it mixed use? What?
So we're still trying to figure out exactly. We don't have an exact docket for what the building's gonna be doing. But what we do know is that it's going to incorporate restaurant space, retail space, event space, and office space. As of right now, we don't expect it to be used for residential space.
That sounds very exciting.
Councilman Goode's?
Well, my district, I'm well aware of that corner right there. Our East Tampa CRA has been really inquiring about that property a long time, what was gonna be happening, what could be done, and especially that water tower. They've been especially curious about that water tower, with some ideas about the area with that water tower.
Right.
So eventually, you know, how we go today, we'd like to look into that water tower. I look in West Tampa, you see West Tampa on the interstate. And this goes forward, we look at maybe doing something where our East Tampa partnership would have an East Tampa logo where people on the interstate can see this is East Tampa.
Yeah, I'm happy to say that the water tower, we were very concerned that it would need to come down. And we're happy to say that it does not need to come down. We're restoring it, so we're excited about that.
I'd like to just mention a few other things about this project. Charlie's put together a pretty good team. It's the team that restored the Arturo Fuente cigar factory, and also the new cigar factory in Ebor City. It's interesting because this, this building had a addition that was done in the late 1950s that made it not a contributing structure. So when they actually were drawing historic district lines, natural historic district lines, they intentionally cut that building out. So this building is not in a historic district, but is, but the team that Charlie has put together is gonna redo that property and that building according to Secretary of the Interior's standards for historic preservation.
Thank you, sir. Anything further? Okay, anything further from council? Councilman Dingfelder?
It's interesting that it's not in the historic district. I know a while back, we, we had looked at identifying all the cigar factories and making them historic on an individual basis, but we didn't, we didn't end up doing that. But I'm just wondering from, and you don't even need to answer this, but perhaps it's an offer from council, but if, if it needs to come into our historic program to help with any type of tax assistance or financial, you know, assistance. I know a lot of times when they are designated historic structures, it can help, you know, with your federal taxes and that sort of thing. So just, just a thought.
We would be excited to take advantage of any tax breaks we can get.
Well, you know, we have a great historic preservation group, and I'm sure that they'd be glad to work with you on that.
Yes, we also just recently applied for the grant, I'm trying to remember the exact name of it, the facade improvement grant, right?
East Tampa facade, yeah.
Yeah, and there's, there's a second one. I'm blanking on the name. But it's a matching grant from the preservation. So we're, we are underway trying to get those to make sure that we do the best job we can to make sure we retain that image, this historic image.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item 52?
I don't believe so. These gentlemen thought it affected their property, but it, they're across the street. So we were just explaining to them that their, this project does not affect their property.
And, and we're sure of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
You okay? All right? Okay.
You have to close.
Okay. We have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by, I'll give it to Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor? Any opposed? Item number 52, Councilman Citro, if you would, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Chair. Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Counselor, Mr. Shelby?
I just want to, just for the purposes of the record, Mr. Citro, the, it is a substitute ordinance, and the title of it is on your addendum.
I'll hear.
Hi, thank you very, very, very much. Okay. File number VAC 1913. Public hearing application of FGCF LLC to vacate alleyway lying north of 17th Avenue, south of 18th Avenue, east of 15th Street, and west of 16th Street. Ordinance be presented for first reading consideration. Ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing. I'm sorry.
Title, as it appears on the agenda, the substitute ordinance is at the bottom of the page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The substitute ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, abandoning a right-of-way alleyway north of 17th Ave., south of 18th Ave., east of 15th Street, west of 16th Street in Sanchez and Hyatt Real Estate Company's revised map, a subdivision in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, the same being more fully described in Section 1 thereof, subject to certain easement reservations, conveyance conditions, restrictions, more particularly set forth herein, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Dingfelder. I guess, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Second meeting and adoption will be held on June 6, 2019 at 9:30 AM.
Thank you. We move now to item 53.
Barbara Lynch?
Mr. Charlie? Could you leave your card at the desk there for my aide? Could you leave your card at the information secretary here? Yeah, leave your card, they contacted you about this.
Barbara Lynch, Land Development Coordination. I'm here on VAC 19-14, which is also in East Tampa. This is a request to vacate an alley, south of 10th Avenue, north of 9th Avenue, east of 32nd Street, and west of 33rd Street. And here's a map for the overhead. The petitioner's property is in red, and the alley to be vacated is in yellow. There's no improvement in the alley. It's grass. Here's the alley looking east from 33rd Street. And here's the alley looking west from 32nd Street. And a petitioner's property is vacant. This is looking north from 9th Avenue. And they have two lots, so that's the second lot. Staff has no objection to this request. There is a request for an easement for wastewater.
Any questions from council members? Councilman John Dingfelder?
Ms. Lynch, we had many, many of these discussions a while back, a decade ago. I thought it was the city's position back then, and I don't know if that's changed, that we look at the overall character and grid of a, of a neighborhood in terms of how it was originally laid out and platted. And, and then we make that decision. If you could, if you could go back to the, to the overall aerial there?
Well, I have a, a map of the plat, actually, like how it's sort of looked at when it's platted. So that, this shows you the surrounding properties. And in this general area, there haven't been that many alley vacatings. So you can see that the alleys are still open. The woods are closed, they're crosshanded.
And I think, my point is, and I recognize this is an area that's undergoing redevelopment, probably. If it hasn't yet, it will soon.
Yeah.
And that having a rear-loaded, especially in a, kind of a historic, you can leave it up.
Oh, okay.
In a historic, you know, semihistoric, or a very historic area, that having, you know, rear-loaded alleys, the opportunity for rear-loading, then you get that nice front porch look
Yeah.
without a big garage. You can put your garage in the rear, you know, that sort of thing. And, and I, so here you've got the property owner who's petitioned owns two out of the 14 lots on the block. Now, if you ask each one of those property owners individually, they go, oh, yeah, I'd love to have an additional 15 feet on my, on my rear property. I understand that. And that's probably why nobody's objected. But if you look at it from a, the city's perspective, I think there's a lot of advantages, and you're the expert on alleys.
Well
You've got decades of alley experience.
Yes.
You know, I think there's a lot of advantages to keeping alleys. And we can talk, we can talk about examples in other historic districts in Hyde Park and in Ebor. This is close to Ebor City, I think you're
Well
Just past, this is a little bit past Ebor, but, you know, a lot of, a lot of tremendous advantages to, to having and keeping those alleys as compared to, you know, it's all about pros and cons and, and, you know, as compared to the pro. Now, if we go back and look at those pictures, yes, it's never been developed, it's not paved, it's a bit overgrown. You know, maybe somebody's gonna show us some pictures of trash, blah, blah, blah. But looking in the big picture, I don't know. I'm not seeing it.
Well, just, you know, these go through review, and they do go to now our urban design group that looked at it, and they okayed this. So they're the ones that would really look at whether they wanted to try and keep that rear-loading alley situation. And the only other thing I could say on this situation, I think that the, the lots are like substandard, you know, and they don't meet the 100-foot depth. So part of, a lot, many times, we get people coming in to vacate alleys to make the lots buildable because they don't meet the, the zoning requirements now. Now, they could do it through rezoning, I believe, too, as well, but sometimes they choose to go down this path.
So how, how big are those lots?
Ah, you know, I can't read this because it's really, really small, but I think they're like 98.
Well, 98
95, 95, yeah.
95 can often be waived administratively, I think.
No, I think they can. I think, we used to have an 80% rule, which we do not have anymore, which would have allowed those to be built that way. But I think they need a rezoning now. To one, you can probably tell us.
I'm a corporate representative of the applicant. We did try to go Nico Tarantino. My address is 911 East 15th Avenue. Yeah, and we did go to zoning, and they said that this would be the proper, the proper venue to, to deal with this. That historically, the, the, the buildable size was the 95 by 50 for this district. And at some point in the last few years, they changed it to 100. So we got cut off, and so we're just trying to adopt that, that extra few feet of space to make, to
But you, but you could have done it through a PD.
Possibly. That would be more zoning could answer that question.
This, this is what the city recommended.
No, I, I understand.
Yeah. But as of now, we can't, it's, these lots are not buildable.
To want Anthony Land Development to create a legal lot, they could rezon the property to PD to allow it to be buildable at the 95, at the 95 feet that's currently there.
And in this case, there's two lots, so it could be a little more cost-effective because you're dealing with two lots instead of just a single lot.
Correct.
Good.
Got one more question. Does the city have any water and sewer line there?
There's a sewer line. The only utility there is a sewer line, and they said they would take an easement.
Julie Hardy, Legal Department. I just wanted to remind counsel, since the, the petition is to vacate this, this alley, some of the criteria that counsel
Yeah.
would normally
Where is the criteria?
base their, their determination on? I have a memo from the former city attorney on that has bullet points, and I can pass that out and go over it with you if you, if you'd like. On the first page, it explains how the determination on whether the vacating of a right-of-way is in the public's interest. And that's, that's the determination counsel would be making to determine whether or not to approve this vacating. And on page two, there are some, some criteria where there's number 1 through 4. Based on the evidence presented at, at this public hearing, counsel would determine if it's in the public's interest, if it's in the general welfare of the public to vacate a street or alley. Will it alleviate costs of maintenance of the right-of-way? Will it alleviate public nuisance such as dumping or criminal activity? And will it foster redevelopment of the abiding properties?
Any questions?
If that's helpful, I can answer any questions.
Councilman Dingfelder?
So, Ms. Lynch had mentioned the urban, what's it, what are they called? The review staff? staff?
Mm-hmm.
Had looked at this.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I think there, you know, there is some pros and cons when I look at these questions, one, one through four. Will it alleviate or relieve the public from cost of maintaining the right-of-way? Well, no, because we're not maintaining it. Will it alleviate a public nuisance such as dumping or criminal activity? There's been no evidence of either. Will it foster redevelopment? Yeah. I mean, he indicates that this will help him redevelop the properties. Will the budding access be completely cut off? No. Serve the public interest? Uh, that's probably a big question that we all have to wrestle with ourselves. And then the last one, item four, is not really applicable because it's, it's not a cul-de-sac situation. But, I think what it, what, to me, what it really comes down to, and I'd love to see us defer this for, for two weeks, and have the urban folks look at it and come back in person and, and talk to us about it, not specifically as related to this big block, but in the big picture because of the precedent that establishes. And I, and I've, I've always thought that these vacatings, sometimes we kind of did them because nobody showed up, and, but this is public land, this is, this is public right-of-way. And, and I think we need to be very careful, because once we've given it up, it's gone forever.
Very true.
So, if, if, whenever Mr. Chairman Protem would like to entertain a motion, I would seek to defer it for two weeks, whenever it's appropriate.
Just a moment.
Yeah.
Councilman Citro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we're going to have reports on this, can we also have any reports from code enforcement as to any type of illegal dumping over the, say, the last year or so, and/or TPD reports on any type of crime that might have happened within the alley?
Thank you.
Sure?
Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion, Councilman Dingfelder?
If you believe it's appropriate at this time to entertain.
I would prefer that you have the opportunity to hear from the applicant at this point.
Oh, yeah, I thought we did.
If we could have the applicant this morning?
And speak, and to speak to the continuance if that's an issue.
I mean, we obviously prefer to have this rule in our favor today. As to the, to the illegal dumping and nuisance, there, I mean, as any of the lots in these neighborhoods, there's a lot of illegal dumping, there's drug paraphernalia that you find, you know, a lot of homeless foot traffic that, that comes through there. The, the, the people who do have homes on this block have already put up fences to, to mitigate those factors. Yeah, so I would, I would just ask that you allow us to, to do this, so these lots become buildable, and we can, you know, hopefully begin to develop this, this area a little bit that's been pretty blighted for, for some time.
Thank you very much, Councilman Dingfelder.
Yeah, and I, is two weeks appropriate, Mr. Chairman?
Sir, do you have, is it your request then, to in order to gather, continue additional evidence, you're requesting staff to be able to come back to the purpose of additional testimony?
Right, including what Mr. Citro asked for.
Yes. Do you understand, you understand the reason for the continuance? This, the council is asking for additional testimony of staff, do you have any objection to that?
When you say, you say staff, the people who produce the report, saying they have no objection, it's the same people who put together this, this report?
Well, I'm asking for additional staff. I'm, I'm asking for additional staff to come and talk to us about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I just, I just want to remind council that this alleyway is not a city-owned, it's, the city just holds it as an easement.
I understand.
The adjacent properties.
It's kind of legit legal semantics, but the bottom line is, 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 you know, it, it's usable by the public as a public easement. Is that better stated by legal?
Yes.
Could I speak? My name's Ann Allison, I'm the attorney for the companies that own these properties, and I'd just like to remind the city, your honors, that an easement or a right-of-way does not make the city an owner. What, what you have is, you have the subservient estate, if you remember from property law, the subservient estate, which is the property owner, and then the city has a right-of-way to use it for a specific purpose, and they're the dominant estate. So, technically, my client owns the property. The problem is, when the city changed the size requirements, they, it eliminated his, their ability to build, so they're not buildable. So, to some extent, it's a, I don't know if it's a Burt Harris-type act or a taking of some sort, but they, they, they just want to use these alleys for setback, and they realize there's still, I guess, sewer underneath the property, and that that needs to be accessed.
Right, and I'm, and I suggested an alternative, because Burt Harris does speak to reasonable alternatives, and the reasonable alternative could be a PD, a planned development, and if we have the power, I would be in support of waiving, of waiving that fee, because I do know there's a fee associated with the PD. So, you know, I don't know if we have that authority, but, but if we did, under these circumstances, it would be completely appropriate to waive that fee. But, anyway, all I'm saying is, we'll get more information two weeks from now, if that date is appropriate for Mr. Chairman, and that would be my motion.
And, and thank you. Any council, and I came in in the middle of it, had to take a call for private sector work, and I apologize. Any discussion from council on the continuance, Mr. Shelby? Question, is that, is that without objection, or?
Thank you.
Or do you want to have a vote up or down today?
I mean, we would like to have a vote if that's possible.
Mr. Chairman, that was going to be my question to council. The petitioner still has the right to say, "No, I would not want this continued, I want to have a vote on this today." And you answer my question.
That is, that is...
Thank you.
And that's binding on us.
Pardon?
That's binding, in other words, if they wish to proceed in spite of our, if we should move to have a preference for continuance, that's binding on us, is that correct? Well, if the person objects, then, then my suggestion would be to, to move forward. Do you, you do understand what council is requesting? The city council, the council is requesting a two-week continuance to take additional testimony from staff before making a decision. Whether you wish to agree to that or not is your decision. You have the right to seek a vote today, but whatever vote you do have today would be binding.
We, well, we believe we've met all the criteria that is required to give all the notice. We haven't had any response from anyone. The city itself does not object, and we're willing with the two conditions of the trees and the, the wastewater criteria that the city in its report suggested or required. So, based on procedurally where we've given everyone notice, and substantively where nobody's objected, and if the city, if, if, if your honors vote on the evidence at hand, we would, I suppose, take the vote, you know, based on where we are right now, the fact that we've met all the notice criteria, and the fact that there's been no objections, including by the city.
I also do note for the record, this is on for first reading consideration, so if council does move forward on this, there will be an opportunity for additional testimony at second reading. But then again, if it, if council does deny this, then it, there is no opportunity for reconsideration.
There is no second hearing. See, we want, but we want our cake and eat it too, we want to know.
We all. And that's a, and that's a good point, Mr. Shelby, which is that in the second reading, we can have additional testimony as, as we seek, I would think. Especially if council, especially if staff is on notice that you wish a particular subject matter to be brought up, by people who are in present, by, of staff today. That's a good point. Councilman Dingfelder is recognized.
Two, one question, one comment. Our city attorney, I don't mean to question Mr. Shelby or Ms. Hardy, but our city attorney's here, and, do you concur with Mr. Shelby that if the petitioner, quote, "demands a vote," and I, and this is a big-picture question, not just related to this item, but if they demand a vote in this, in this quasi-judicial hearing, I, I think that's what we're in, that, that they get a vote regardless of council's desires? And I'm not saying I speak for this council, but I'm just, I'm looking at a big-picture question on that.
Okay. South Dakota City Attorney, I think what you had on the floor basically is you were trying to get a continuance, and there was no vote taken on the continuance. My suggestion would be, see if you can get a second and a vote on the continuance, and if not, they're gonna, you're gonna move forward on your first reading.
That's not my question, and it's a big-picture question for future procedural situations. Mr. Shelby sort of opened the door and said, "If they want a vote, they can push us to, or they can demand a vote today." And I'm not, I'm not sure I agree with that, but, but, but you're the city attorney and I'm not. So...
I think it is, I think it is within your option to move this thing or not move it. It is, it is not up to them, it is up to you.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Shelby. I guess we can all, we can all differ on that. But, but with that said, I liked what Mr. Chairman said, I like what Mr. Shelby said, to move it forward on first reading today because we can have additional information in second reading. Can't necessarily say I'm gonna support that, but I'm okay, I'll withdraw my motion to continue.
Thank you, sir. Anything further from the applicant in the time that you have allotted?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone, and any further questions from council before we go to public comments? Okay, anyone here from the public here to comment on item number 53?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Councilman Miranda, if you could take item number 53, sir.
Mr. Chairman, item number 53, file number VAC 19-14.
And I apologize.
Sorry, I have a thing.
Okay, I was gonna say, did you have anything else?
That was unanimous, you know, that was...
Okay, I was gonna say, okay. I'm sorry, Councilman Miranda.
Thank you. Item number 53, file number VAC 19-14. Moving ordinance presented for first read consideration and orders vacating, closing, discontinuing, abandoning a right-of-way alleyway lying north of east Ninth Avenue, south of east Tenth Avenue, east, north of Thirty-second Street, and west of north Thirty-third Street and Powell's addition to east Ebor, a subdivision in the City of Tampa, Florida, Hillsborough County, Florida, the same being more fully described in Section 1 thereof, subject to certain easement reservations, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, more particularly set forth herein, providing an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried, Ms. Dingfelder and Carlson, hold on. In addition, second reading and adoption will be held on June 6, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
Mr. Chairman, uh...
Yes, sir.
...to tag along with that, second reading.
Could we request that staff from the urban design folks be present and, and review this petition carefully, as well as perhaps written reports from TPD and code enforcement that Mr. Citro asked for?
That was advised, Chair. Excuse me, Councilman.
Okay, and will that be, I guess, in the form of a motion?
We'll do it as a motion.
Why not? And I'll give you the second, I guess, we, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Chairman, I'd like to give you thirty more minutes for the meeting, although I think we're gonna need it.
Yes, sir, thank you for that. Councilman Miranda, a motion by Councilman Miranda for thirty extra minutes, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And for council members here, anybody, everybody okay going some more time? Okay, just making sure. Okay, we move to item 54.
Barbara Lynch, Land Development Coordination. This request is a city-initiated vacating, and it's in West Tampa, and it's for a portion of Grace Street that, where is this actually? It's south of Nassau, north of Cypress, east of Clark, and west of I-275 at dead ends at the interstate. And FDOT is actually the abutting owner in red on this map, and the Grace Street is in yellow, and this is a request by the city on behalf of FDOT. They are asking for this to be vacated because they're going to be constructing a trailhead parking lot here, and the purpose of the parking lot is to have, allow parking for people to use Cypress Point Park, and eventually connect to Courtney Campbell Trail and Skyway Park. So, this is a picture of Grace Street looking east towards the interstate. They now own all the property on either side, it's a dead-end road, and this is Grace Street looking west toward, from the dead end, and then this is, it's all been cleared, so this is the property on the north and the property on the south. And then here is a picture of the planned parking lot that they're gonna be constructing, and then they will turn that over to the city. And the city's the applicant, so I'm sort of speaking on behalf of that.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Any questions from council members? Okay, thank you very much. Is the applicant here?
City, damn it.
Excuse me. I used to say that. Okay, thank you very much. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item number 54?
Move to close.
Councilman Dingfelder?
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Shelby and I were conferring about a legal issue, but when I looked at this, you know, it's obviously has no purpose, et cetera, et cetera, but what, why is the city, why is the city doing this?
The city is doing it on behalf of DOT, because DOT is working with the city to build a trailhead parking lot. They're gonna, they've obtained the property, they're vacate, we're vacating the street, then they're gonna move out all the utilities, construct the parking lot, and then turn that over to the city, and that's gonna be used by people that are gonna be using Cypress Point Park and eventually the Skyway Trail and...
Very cool, very cool. Okay, thank you.
School project.
Thank you. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item 54?
Move to close.
Sir?
Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Carlson, if you, sir, could take item 54.
File number VAC 19-12, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, abandoning a portion of right-of-way known as Grace Street lying north of Cypress Street, east of Clark Avenue, west of I-275, and north of Nassau Street, and Velvadaire Park, a subdivision in the City of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, the same being more fully described in Section 1 hereof, subject to certain easement reservations, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, more particularly set forth herein, providing effective date.
Go ahead, sir. We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair, the second meeting and adoption will be held on June 6, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Now, we move on to item 55, and before we begin, Councilman Citro, I think we should make a statement.
Yes, having spoken with our, our council, and having been on the VRB board, I have to recuse myself from this, this agenda item.
And you, I'll prepare the, the Form 8B paperwork for you, and you'll be able to file it with the clerk next week.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. While we're on the subject, though, I believe, Councilmember Dingfelder, you were not involved in this particular item, is that correct? I believe that's been verified.
Krista Moore, Legal Department, that is correct, he was not involved in this item.
Thank you.
Right, and even though I was serving on the VRB as an alternate at the time, I was not here that particular evening, I was not selected as the alternate that particular evening, so I did not spend in this, so I can today.
Thank you.
Yes, that is correct. Actually, counsel, I am not aware that the applicant is here, I do not see her in the audience, and I have not seen her in the audience despite having checked a few times. So, unless someone comes running in, I would say to counsel, the applicant is not here, it is your pleasure, how you wish to proceed, but typically in these situations, you would grant a continuance and see if they appear at the next hearing.
Yeah, and, and I, I mean, I'd like to hear from council, but I know I have my preference. Any comments?
I'd, I'd prefer that the applicant be here so that we continue it, and there's no legal issue and whatnot, so keeps that clear. Make a motion for, let's...
Next council, maybe.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to continue this item to our next regular city council meeting, which is June 6.
We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco.
Ten thirty.
Thank you, sir.
At ten thirty.
A, a motion by Councilman Maniscalco with the aforementioned time and date, with a second by Councilman Gudes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Next, we move to item 56, and I do believe there's a motion to reschedule.
Yes, a motion to reschedule to August 1, 2019 at 10:30 a.m.
We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have already dealt with the items moved from the consent agenda, now we move onward to item number 57. Ms. Little.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Councilmember Sonia Little, Revenue and Finance. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you to present the FY 2019 mid-year review. Also want to thank each one of you for allowing us time on your calendars to provide you with individual briefings, and with that, if you don't mind, I'd like to jump right into the presentation, and we have slides that, if you'll allow, that I can walk you The mid-year review will contain an economic update, and we'll also provide you and walk you through our forecast for the FY 19 major revenues and major expenditures, and also provide you with an update on the performance of each of our enterprise funds. Starting out, as I mentioned to each one of you in our individual briefings, the way that we provide our forecast for how we're going to end, how we are projecting that we will end our FY 2019 budget... we will end our FY 2019 budget year ending September 30, is we start out, obviously, with the adopted budget for 2019, but keeping in mind that the data that was used to formulate the budget now is roughly a year and a half old. So this mid-year review is pretty critical to give council and the public an indication of how the city is performing with the overall city budget. To do that, we take a look at economic data that we receive from economists from a global level, a national level, state level, and also the regional level specific to the Tampa Bay metropolitan statistical area or the Tampa Bay MSA. So starting out, we'll take a look at a couple of the key economic indicators that we focus on, and then we'll tie it all into what that means to us as we provide our economic forecasts. So starting out with the most popular of which that we always hear about in the news, gross domestic product, which measures the country's economic activity and provides the value of goods and services produced in the U.S. So it basically gives us an indication of how fast the economy is growing. The percentages that you see are the rate of change year over year. So in the case of 2019, the red line being for Florida, it's expected that it'll be a 3.3% increase over the prior year, 2018. And basically, the gross domestic product for Florida is slightly outpacing the national growth, but we will expect to see a decrease in 2020 and '21. What you see here, the year-over-year increase is largely due to construction and population growth and improvement in employment. As it relates to job growth, Florida job growth should outpace national job growth due to increases in construction and professional and business services sector. In particular, financial activities, construction and mining and professional business services for the Tampa Bay MSA are leading the charge as far as job growth is concerned. I would like to point out that the data that we are providing you with, the source is as of March 2019, the quarterly release from the Institute for Economic Competitive through the University of Central Florida. We use this source frequently because they provide information, not just globally and nationally, but information specific to our region, the Tampa Bay MSA. So we find that information to be very, very helpful as we formulate our forecast. That coupled with the city of Tampa's actual performance. Unemployment, Florida continues to outpace the rest of the nation in the labor market. And again, construction is one of the driving factors. In the coming years, we are expected to see that sort of level off, primarily due to projections for continuing interest rate increases out starting in 2020. New housing starts really important to us, and this was an interesting one because you'll see in 2018, for the Tampa Bay MSA, there was a negative decline. So when we did our research to find out the contributing factors there, we found that there was a slowdown for the Tampa Bay MSA largely due to Hurricane Irma. So the new housing start constructions shifted from new construction to recovery and repair during that year. It's the backup information that we received. So then when you see correspondingly the increase or the spike in the subsequent year forecast, that's as a result of addressing those delays in the new construction, new starts constructions. So the rebound will accelerate and then again start to level off as far as our expectations for the new housing starts. Personal income, increases in housing prices, an improving job market, and a booming stock market, which recently, as you know, there's been some volatility. There are factors that are out of our control, as we all know, at the global and national levels. We're all hearing a lot of chatter as it relates to the tariffs and the possible impacts to our U.S. economy. We watch that information very closely to see how that will, if you will, trickle down and impact specific to the city of Tampa, because that's really what we care about for these budgeting purposes. So there will be additional economic data that will be provided. Month of June is going to be big for us as far as our forecasts are concerned. So as I walk you through our forecast, just keep in mind it's very fluid and that we are expecting additional information to come out regarding the market after economic indicators are announced for the months of April and May. The Fed is having a meeting in the month of June that will capture a lot of the more recent economic activity and may have some impact on the forecast.
Could I just ask a quick question about this?
Councilman Carlson is recognized.
Thank you. I know it's statistically insignificant maybe, but why is, why do you think the Florida numbers are greater than the Tampa Bay numbers?
Just Florida capturing more diversity as a state as opposed to just a region as far as the number of industries that would be captured to increase that. So it's a more diverse bucket, if you will, of industries that would be captured under Florida, thereby driving up that percentage increase. Population growth continues to be slow to moderate, again pointing out that the percentages you see there are the percentage increase over the prior year, so it's a rate of change indication. And we've been saying for many, many years now that population growth, especially for the Tampa Bay MSA, is expected to be slow to moderate. So even though it tends to taper off a little bit, comparatively speaking, there's not a whole, a large dip, if you will, but still continued slow-to-moderate growth. Inflation in the May 1 commentary made by Chairman Powell with the Federal Reserve as it relates to the summary of the Fed's Open Market Committee. The Fed still is targeting a 2% inflation rate, and this is important to the city of Tampa because it also gives us an indication of the cost or our purchasing power for each dollar that the city anticipates spending. So the Fed has indicated that they're committed to the 2% target rate and that they are also committed to an overarching goal to use their monetary policies to sustain economic expansion and a strong job market with stable prices. So if the Fed is able to continue to keep our economy growing even at the slow-to-moderate pace it is, obviously that's beneficial to the city of Tampa. So to put the economic data in perspective as we move through the actual specific budget discussions or updates as to where we are for FY 2019, because we are limited in our control, obviously, of what happens in the global markets, there's a lot of chatter about what's going on in China and Europe, still dealing with Brexit, the tariff and trade wars that are really, really hot and heavy as far as discussions about the global economy. Our posture is that because we don't have control over those types of things, that we are really, really closely monitoring the city of Tampa's performance. So as I walk through with you and show you how we're adjusting or making our forecast for the September 30 year-end 2019, if you will, just keep in mind that we have actual performance for the current budget year through March 31 of 2019. So that coupled with all of the economic data, coupled with our discussions with our economic development department as far as planned construction, permits, and so forth, all of those factors are combined to come up with our current forecast as we stand today. So just to recap, when council adopted the budget July, September of 2019, the budget was developed with several budget objectives, and we've listed them here, and they have been the budget objectives of the city for the last several budget cycles. And basically, in 2019, the total citywide budget is $1,280,000,000. The budget years 16 and 17, there was an effort to start addressing a lot of the city's deferred maintenance. So there were more capital projects that were included in those two budgets, whereas the current budget year, it was more geared toward maintaining all those capital projects that were coming online. So there weren't a large number of new capital projects in the '19 budget, more focused on maintaining what the city had tried to address in the prior two fiscal years. That being said, the pie chart in front of you shows you the breakdown by the major categories of what's included in the city's budget. The large blue part of the pie, 40% of the total citywide budget relates to the general fund. So when we're talking about balancing the budget, this is basically where we're going to concentrate our discussions. Because the large green part, or 40% of the city's total wide budget, relates to our enterprise funds, our water, wastewater, parking, solid waste, and our golf courses. The city charges a fee to customers who receive services in our enterprise departments, and those fees and services are geared toward self-supporting each one of those respective departments. So when we walk you through next month, the total budget, we'll give you more information on what that means to our enterprise departments. But right now, as far as our forecasting is concerned, we're going to provide you with our, how we've changed our figures in some cases related to the line items in the general fund. So if you take that blue piece of the total city budget and we go to just the general fund discussion and break that down, the general fund is supported primarily by property taxes. It's our largest revenue source for the general fund, but also business tax, half-cent sales taxes, utility services taxes, electric franchise fees, and various charges for services, which also include convention center, parks, EMS, and so forth. It's a bucket of revenues that support general government functions. And those general government functions include, obviously, public safety, which makes up 63% of our general fund budget at $260 million. Then we have also included in the general fund budget parks and rec. Central government, which is the administration, city clerk's office, other examples include city council, HR, revenue and finance, purchasing, the mayor's office. So all of those back office, if you will, responsibilities are included in central government, which makes up 10% of the overall general fund budget. Public works, which the large majority of it is facilities and contract administration, economic development, which includes planning and development primarily. And I think I hit them all. So because public safety is such a large component of the general fund budget, making up 63%, we typically try to put that into perspective because it's a large portion of what we'll be talking about when we bring forth to you the options for balancing the 2020 budget. So here in this chart, you'll see that to the right, the pie chart, I already mentioned, I believe, that our property tax revenues are roughly $200.4 million. Of those total revenues coming into the city, 21.8 of them are designated for use within our various citywide CRAs. So in essence, there's a net property tax revenue amount of $178.6 million that would be available to take care of our general fund expenditures. And this chart clearly shows with public safety being at $248.5 million that our property taxes don't even cover our public safety needs. So our budget process, we are very forced, we've really done a lot to improve our efficiencies by improving our modeling capabilities. We have for several years now, and our departments do an excellent job, including our public safety off departments, as far as managing their expenses. Each one of our departments is assigned a budget analyst who works with them on a day-to-day basis where we provide reporting and updates on how they are performing on any given day in the current budget year, so that if we can head something off early, that's our goal. But our major goal is to keep our departments informed and to assist them in staying on track with their individual budgets.
Councilman Goode's.
So the pie, that's real money, no deferred money, no incentives, that's all real money in the pie?
Yes, sir. That's real money, councilman, every dollar coming in and every dollar going out for the city of Tampa. So the next couple of slides, we're going to touch on some major revenues in the general fund. As we mentioned, property tax being our largest source of revenue, it makes up about 35% of the general fund revenues coming into the city. When we started the budget process in 2018, we had to make certain assumptions as far as the property tax revenues to be received based on information we received from the tax collector's office, and then making certain assumptions about maybe property owners taking advantage of the discount rate. You know, if you pay early enough, you get a 4% discount. So our early projections at 200.4 made certain assumptions about property owners taking advantage of the discount because it's such a large revenue. We needed to be conservative, assuming certain numbers for the discount. Well, fewer property owners than expected took advantage of the discount, so when they paid, they paid more. So that meant that we could increase our projection for property tax revenues just over $2 million. The city's electric franchise fee, which back in 2012 was at 4.6% of the revenues charged by electric utilities. In 2012, the city increased it to the maximum allowable of 6%. And it's been somewhat steady since that time. And we feel that based on the actual performance from October 1 to March 31, that we need to just sit tight at the 31.6 projection. So you see the green dot there, there was no movement up or down on that particular line item. Our half-cent sales tax, on the other hand, based on performance, the actual performance, we feel comfortable in increasing that one slightly, roughly $500,000. And again, that's based on the actual collections through March 31. And we feel comfortable that even with that increase, it is still a conservative and Utility services tax, which is a tax on the utility bills for electric in particular, primarily, one of our major funding sources, based on performance, as we did with the prior slide, based on performance, we see a trend that would dictate that we would decrease it, so the, decrease it slightly. So the red block shows a $200,000 decrease in that projection, and we'll continue to watch that closely. And if adjustments are needed as we formulate the 2020 budget, and possibly when I come back to you in June to give you more updated information related to the budget, we may have some updates there. The communications... The communications services tax, which is a tax that the city is allowed to charge on landlines primarily in the city of Tampa, we all know that people are getting rid of landlines, so this one, we've been watching for some time. Just to put this in perspective, maybe a little less than 10 years ago, this, this revenue stream was roughly $30 million. We started out the budget process because we know that cell phones are taking over, and people are continuing to get rid of landlines. We started out extremely conservative with that one, because it, we, it's obvious one, obvious one, an obvious one that would possibly change, but based on the performance to date, we're going to keep it at our budgeted figure. So those were the major revenues. Now, we do this process with hundreds of line items throughout this, throughout the budget, but just to give you a sense of how this process works, and the most impactful revenues and the most impactful expenses, now we'll shift over and start talking about some, some of the expenditures for the general fund. Major one, highest one, obviously, is the city's personnel cost. We have increased that particular line item upward, just over $2 million. The positive factor there is that the trend has been more overtime and more extra duty than originally anticipated, so we feel the need to project that particular line item up an additional $2 million-plus dollars.
Oh, yes, Councilman Carlson, thank you.
Yeah, sometimes charts don't show the whole picture. What it, what would it have looked like in 2008 or 2007?
I can get you that information.
It was a lot, was a lot more than-
It would have been, it would have been lower.
Lower than 333.
It would have been lower, because what's, what's captured here, councilman, over the years, would be the annual increases.
Okay.
And primarily driven by the collective bargaining unit contracts.
Thank you.
Two of our other large general fund expenditures, you're aware that the city of Tampa has two pension funds, one for fire and police, the other for general employees. We've been fortunate in that, even during the difficult times when the market was off and the city was experiencing the impact of the recession, that the city has never taken a pension holiday. The city has always made 100% of its pension fund contributions as dictated by an independent actuarial accountant, one for fire and police, and also one for general employees pension As it stands today, the funded ratio for fire and police is 96%, which, when you compare to other like pension funds, is very, very strong. We have adjusted upward, our estimate of what the city's contribution will be tied back into the increased overtime and extra duty, so that will have an impact, we believe, on the required contribution. But again, this is market-driven and also actuarially-
Councilman Goodes, if I may.
When you say extra duty, are we saying extra duty the city's paying on top, or you're saying extra is coming in from outside?
Thank you. So for budgetary purposes, for that particular line item, and I was gonna, you're right on target there, I was gonna bring that, it's double-sided. So the, the revenue side goes up, but the expenditure goes up also, it is a pass-through, but it all gets counted in the budget. So as the numbers go up and down, it'll go up on the revenue side as well as the expense side, because we receive money in from the outside for those extra duty expenses, but for reporting purposes and budgetary purposes, it's sort of a wash.
Councilman Carlson.
So the, you, you said we're at 96%. Usually, when the market is high, these funds are at a higher percent, it's, do you have an estimate of where it might go, and what was the lowest it was at in the first, from a percentage point of view at the, during the Great Recession?
I can tell you, sir, both of them, and if I can show you GE, and I can come full circle to your question. General employees is at a fund debt ratio of 90.8 or 91%. For the, at least the last 10 years, both funds have been in the 90% range, and I always say that the city of Tampa is one of the premier pension fund, under, pension funds under management for public entities, and in many cases, we've been penalized by the bad behavior of others, honestly, to be quite frank. And back in 2017, I believe it was, 2007, the, the mortality tables.
The rate increased.
So if you look and you see in 2017, where there's a bump or an increase, the state of Florida mandated that all public pension funds in the state of Flor- Florida adopt the same mortality table. So that impacted the city of Tampa tremendously during that time, because we couldn't use our own mortality tables. And that increased the city's contribution, because the mortality ta- tables that we then had to adopt had a negative impact. So that being said, the 90% range has been where we have been, at least for the past 10 years. We could go back beyond that, but at least for the-
But even during the Great Recession, it was 90%.
Yes.
Yeah, great.
That's, that's correct.
You and I talked before about the SBA problem and all that, and, you know, hats off to you all for managing it. Just trying to think ahead, I don't, I want us to end up in a situation like Jacksonville. It sounds like we're way far away from that, but-
We're way far away from that, and because unlike other local governments, the city has never taken a pension holiday. Even in the rough times. It was painful, but never took the holiday. The annual healthcare cost, another major general fund expenditure in calendar year 2019, and we, we asked an independent entity to put together, Gallagher, to put together a survey, we wanted to know how we stacked up to, to the, to the country, if you will, the national healthcare trends. One thing we know for sure, healthcare costs are going up. The one thing that we can do is to figure out how to mitigate or lower those costs and relieve the burden on the city's contribution and the premium payments that all of our employees make. And to put it in perspective, because the city of Tampa is self-insured, we have our own wellness centers, we have our own wellness programs, where we provide seminars, we provide webinars and classes, our employees have direct a- access to a nurse who assists with healthcare management, and other, other abilities to go online and actually get healthcare information and manage individual employee and family healthcare. So all of those measures that the city has taken on for the past 10 years have been quantified, and we'll come back to you at a later date with information to show you how the healthcare metrics with our employees are improving over time, as a, a result of our self-insured plan and the access that our employees have to healthcare. But when it comes to the bottom line, we have done really well as far as driving the costs down as they do rise, and this is shown in this chart by a comparison to the national healthcare trends.
And if I may, Councilman Maniscalco wishes to make a motion on time?
Uh, if we could move for another 15 minutes.
Okay.
Let's do 30, just in case.
Uh, another 30 minutes then, just in case, sure.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Randolph, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, thank you, Chairman. So what does all of that mean? You've, you've seen the highlights on the major revenues, the major expenditures, and the up and down, and staying flat in some cases. That was done through the, throughout the entire billion-dollar budget, or in the case of general fund, $400 million general fund budget. So the current budget, as it stands right now, anticipates that after all the revenues come in and all the expenditures go out, that we would have in excess of $350,000 that would flow to the bottom line, or flow to fund balance. Based on the adjustments that we are making through our forecast, we now are forecasting that we'll, end the year $3.8 million ahead, where our revenues would outpace our expenditures about $3.8 million. So this is important, because it sets the framework as we start to develop the 2020 budget, and figure out how we continue to address our deferred maintenance, how we are going to address our expenses, our operating expenses associated with personnel and healthcare costs, as, as costs and prices continue to increase. So this will-
Oh, sorry, Councilman Goodes.
That anticipated overage that you just mentioned, is that going to stay with the general fund, is that going to a reserve fund, or how do we operate that?
We will know better. We are having those discussions, councilman. June is going to be a telling month for us, so until we get to June, and until we have more discussions on what the priorities are for the new administration, I wouldn't be able to answer you just yet, sir. I may have more information when we come back and do the 2020 budget workshop in June.
Councilman Carlson.
You may be answering this in a subsequent slide, but could you tell me, and sorry if I get the term wrong, what the general fund reserve was in 2011 and what it is now, and what your recommendation would be going, if, if we're going into recession in a year or two? What, what would you, this is, what, what I mean is, uh, reserves that are not tied to any specific bond covenants, that would not change our, our bond ratings if we, if we had to use them, like a rainy day fund.
And you're right, it's on the next slide. Just in time, just in time. So the city of Tampa, for its general fund, has a 20% reserve policy, and it's 20% of general fund expenditures. That is a gauge for a healthy city of our size. The chart here shows you historically what the percentage, general fund, our fund balance percentage has been year-over-year for the last several budget cycles. And to answer your question, councilman, back in 2011, the fund balance was, this is the unencumbered fund balance, it was $127 million. And during the 10-year period that we were experiencing, experiencing the recession, I think it was 2011, 12, 13, and 14 in particular, we were forced to tap the reserves in order to balance the budget, with the goal of providing our citizens with the same level of service without making additional cuts to personnel, because that's where, where the savings was during those 10 years, it was cuts to personnel. And the city had previously already eliminated 700 positions, so the decision was, and we mapped out a plan, because as you mentioned, it's important from a credit perspective to the city to maintain healthy reserves, and we're, we are a growing city, so the expectations, we're, we're constantly chasing what that fund balance should look like, because as we grow, that 20% policy may not be sufficient, and that's something that we're having open discussions about and working on very closely. What we have been able to demonstrate, even during the times that we tapped our reserves in order to balance the budget, is that we had a plan, and the plan was mapped out, and we've been able to demonstrate that the city was living within its mean during those tough times, and you'll see later on that, whereas other governmental entities were being downgraded, and understandably so during the recession, the city of Tampa was receiving upgrades. So right now, the projection for the 2019 fund balance would be $100.2 million. So that's an, oh, an overview of the general fund.
And Councilman Dinkfelder.
I was sure if you wanted us to hold our questions or jump in as we go, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So you mentioned about the, the 700 position reduction, and I imagine some was just attrition, which is fine, and then others were actual layoffs, which is less fine, but earlier in the agenda, I brought up a couple of items that were, previously, it appeared to me, we probably did some of that in-house, and now we're contracting out. Does your department, or, or anybody else under your purview, look at those issues in terms of, okay, now we're past the recession, we're probably contracting out some of these positions, or some of these tasks, and encourage the departments to, you know, to analyze that? Would we be, you know, be able to save some money by pulling, you know, doing some of those tasks in-house again? As opposed to, you know, nothing wrong with the private sector, but, but I think we're, you know, if at all possible, we should be exploring those questions.
Absolutely, and that's part of our budget process when we work with each one of our departments, and they demonstrate or, or articulate the needs from a personnel or contractual basis. As we start to come out of these issues, and that's one of the reasons why the starting point, that $3.8 million is going to be important as we start to plan out 2020, because the services we provide as the city continues to grow, there is greater need for, for bodies to carry out these, 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 uh, these tasks. So that being said, there is a process in place that, in order to provide a particular level of service for all the services that we provide through the city of Tampa, there is an analysis of whether or not it's better, the citizens would be better served from a service, a level of service perspective, as well as a, a funding perspective, in-house versus out-house, out, out of the city. So the analysis, yeah.
Councilman Goodes.
So the analysis is done.
Are, how, how much of a micro level do you, does that question get down to? I mean, in other words, one of the items we had earlier, I think, was several hundred thousand dollars for cleaning out the stormwater, something or other. Does that analysis get down to that level in terms of a particular contract, or is it just sort of a broader, broad, broader brush approach to, to, you know, looking at those issues?
It's, it's a combination of both, and I didn't see the conversation that was going on about that particular contract, but I'll use stormwater, if I may, as an example. When the stormwater program was being developed, where all the master planning was done and so forth, there was a great deal of analysis for every component of the program to determine whether or not the city, the citizens would be best served with the city delivering the service or contracting out. So from a, a large program like that, and as we move into discussions about the water and wastewater program, there will be a great deal of analysis to determine if the city is better served to have it brought in-house, which means we evaluate whether or not we have to increase our headcount, and how do we price that out based on salary, benefits, and pension compared to getting the same level contracting out.
Yeah, because when, when I heard the number 700, it kind of blew my mind, because how many general employees are there to start with? About 2,000 or something like that, right?
It's about three.
Two or 3,000.
3,000.
So, so, so when you're, and, and I've got a guess, we didn't, we didn't lay off police or fire, which is good. So when you're talking about 700 out of three, you know, 3,000, or 3,000 or 4,000, which it was originally, that's a, that's a significant chunk.
Right.
So anyway, we'll, we'll continue that discussion.
If I can add one, one more thing, councilman, as part of that analysis, it's not only just the, the headcount and what that means, I call it fully loaded, if you will, that means the, the salary, the benefits, pension costs, and any other associated costs.
Sure.
If we have to buy any type of apparatus or equipment and so forth, so a fully loaded comparison is done in-house versus not.
Sure, and that makes sense, that's apples to apples, and I agree.
And then the other thing that's considered as, um, the budget department and our departments do that analysis, is, for example, if we have to buy equipment to carry out or provide some type of a construction- some type of construction, having that equipment in inventory for one project, you know, we buy it and can only use it one time or can we redeploy it, all of that's part of the analysis.
Sure. Councilman Goods, I'm sorry, were you?
Yes.
Councilman Goods.
I guess as a tag on to Councilman Dingfelder, I think we kind of briefly talked about it. I guess my concern, it's kind of like an organization, I've got several of them, I've got a treasurer, and we ask for a product or ask for something to be built and we come back with this astronomical price. My concern is, are we, your department, was there a system in place to say, wait a minute, where do we get that number from? So if you're saying, this is a bathroom, and we say a bathroom, they bring up a practice saying $250,000 for the small bathroom. Who questions that? I would have a problem with that, saying a $250 project for a small bathroom when I can build a house at that magnitude. So does anybody look at that and questions those items in your department or any department and say, hey, that's way too out the market there and maybe somebody's getting fat off of that?
Yes, sir. And I have to tell you, I'm really proud of my team because long before I even heard the cost, my team had flagged it and contacted the responsible contract admin folks to figure out why is a project, using this particular example, at this cost. And when the experts explained to my department why those costs, I mean, we're not the experts, but we can send up a red flag and question things, there was a viable explanation as to why the cost was as it was. So this happens across the board, not only with just our construction, but lease agreements and our city attorney and others can tell you that we have to sign off on everything before it comes to the mayor, before it comes to city council. So we do flag a lot to get the backup information, relying on those departments. They are the experts, but we just want to make sure that everything is considered because we have to make sure that we're spending the city's funding appropriately. So that's part of our responsibility.
Councilman Carlson.
Sorry if I could just go back to the last slide just for a second. You talked about the general fund reserves that were 20 or 30 million dollars higher before we went into the Great Recession. I think economists are predicting that this next recession will be less, and you and I talked about that too, less maybe than the last one. But in your opinion, and let me say this also, we desperately need services and we need to fix some of the things that are in the city. But what would be your professional opinion, looking at where the reserves were, general fund reserves were before the last recession, and where do you think our target should be? Do you think we should just be just above that 20% or do you think we should be saving more knowing that there's some downturn going on? Because it, you know, as you know, worst case would be we get in the middle of recession and then we have to lay off a whole bunch of people again and services are even worse than before.
Right. So just to put that in perspective, right now, we're at 23%. I think prior to the 2008 crash, the city was at 32% and thankfully so. In my professional opinion, I'm a little bit reluctant to change our policy or request that we change our policy right now from the 20%. However, we do have conversation and we do have pressure that we need to rebuild. So if you go back over the last three budget cycles, we have been putting anywhere from one to about 1.8 million dollars back into the reserve. I believe in my professional opinion, we need to do more because heaven forbid, we do have a huge crisis in the economy. And to your point, if we want to continue providing the same level of service, we don't have the same cushion, if you will, that we did back in 2008. So we really need to strive to building, rebuilding our reserves for a city of our size that's growing at the rate that we're growing.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll let Ms. Little finish the remainder just for the sake of time because we moved to 30 minutes and we're about 15 minutes away from that, so go ahead, ma'am.
All right. And I can, since I've met with you individually, I can just kind of do the highlights, if you'll allow, on our enterprise funds, starting out with parking. Just want to point out that this presentation is a little bit different in that when it comes to our enterprise funds, we start gauging cash flows at this point. So in 2019, if you go all the way to the bottom line, and this is the same case with each one of the subsequent slides, the $200,000 increase relates as to after we pay all of the, after we receive all of the revenues, we pay all the operating expenses for the department, we pay the debt service related to the particular department and all of the capital projects. We were estimated to have about $200,000 to be used for other purposes. Since the budget was adopted, council has already authorized a budget amendment to fund compressed natural gas station, gas station for the department. And we will be coming back to you as it relates to construction fund needs for McKay Bay. So if you go over to the projection, we have indicated, I'm sorry, I went to solid waste. I went straight to solid waste. Let me backtrack that and if you keep that in mind, and I won't repeat it when I get to solid waste. Parking, parking, we sold the parking lot, Jackson Street parking lot, right across the street from us where the construction is going up. The proceeds taken from Jackson Street is about $4 million. That's why you see the increase in fund balance. About two years ago, a year ago, the city underwent a parking facility study where they actually did a study related to all of our parking garages and all of our parking lots. This is solely the bricks and mortar related to the parking system. We have about $12 million in needs. So it was only befitting now that parking system is finally self-supporting as far as its operations are concerned. There was a time where the general fund was subsidizing the parking system during the recession, about $6 million a year. So we're pleased to see and there's some room for improvement probably on the rate side to make sure that we're charging appropriate rates for the parking system. But they are covering their operations, but we have some work to do on the capital side to do repairs within the system. But for now, we're taking the $4 million from the sale of the Jackson Street parking lot, keeping those proceeds in the city to address some of the capital needs. So I already did this one, the solid waste, where we talked about the transfer station and the compressed natural gas. Water, wastewater, if you'll allow, I'll make this brief because we intend on coming back to you at your June 6 meeting to give you a full-blown overview of the $3 billion in needs, the 20-year master plan for the water and wastewater systems. We're scheduled to be on your calendar for a workshop where we'll take you through the engineering, the construction needs, and the funding solutions related to water and I touched on this before and, Councilman, this touches on you asking me my professional opinion. Again, during the recession, even though we were tapping our reserves and we had challenges balancing the budget, we were able to lay out plans, we did exactly what we said we were going to do and fortunately, we were rewarded. The bond ratings are a really good independent review of the city's financial condition. The top line, the issuer credit rating is the overall financial condition or well-being of the city of Tampa and we are AAA by S&amp;P, which is the highest rating a local government can receive. And the AA1 and AA+ is just one notch below that. So we are a highly rated governmental entity. And the line items below that show you our bond ratings for each of our outstanding bond programs. So based on one of the questions that I received during our briefing, I thought it would be helpful to provide this so that council and the public has an idea of where we are as far as our, the city's outstanding debt. And this chart shows the principal amount outstanding. The blue line is the city's governmental debt. Green line is the enterprise debt, means it's funded from the revenues collected for providing services, you know, the utility bills, for example, pay for that debt. The governmental debt is paid by all that bucket of revenues that we talked about earlier. Anything left over, that's not enterprise fund monies after we pay for operations of the city. It goes towards paying this debt. And you'll see that actually this is the optimal structure in that we're paying down the city's outstanding debt over time. And a general rule of thumb is that to be in, a good target is to have 50% of your outstanding principal paid off within the next 10 years. And the city of Tampa is at 65% paid off in the next 10 years for general government and 64% paid off. So we are exceeding the best practice as how you pay down your outstanding debt over The next slide is very important because it gives you an indication of our debt obligations out through 2046. So this is the annual debt service. If you take all of our bonds outstanding, all of our debt, our bank loans, everything, it's included on this table to show you how much we pay on an annual basis in debt service. What's important in this table, if you see the outer years, so as the city continues to grow, our needs for capital plans, capital funding continues to grow, it's important to see that we have capacity should the city wish to undertake major projects, capacity out in the longer years. So we're very mindful that when we come to you, if we have to, we do all that we can to avoid having to issue debt, but if we need funding to carry out some of the goals of the city's vision, then we will show you the impact on the city's coverage levels, which will include revenues minus operating expenses and how much we have to pay for debt. And you'll see how much more we have in the way of capacity for future years. So just to, you know, put it in perspective and show you how this is all mapped out and the considerations that go forth because we have some huge programs that we'll have to come back and talk to you about, water and wastewater being the major one. And, Mr. Chairman, the last thing, and I will just put this up very, very quickly. The budget calendar, as I mentioned, I'll be coming back before you for a workshop on June 13 to provide you with whatever information we can on how we're formulating the 2020 budget. And the mayor, we're going to target an August 1st where she'll come and deliver the proposed 2020 budget. And then obviously, we'll hold two public hearings after that, once we can get them scheduled because there are other factors that drive when we can schedule those public hearings.
Thank you very much for your detailed presentation. Let's go through the line just in case if there's any additional comments by council members, Councilman Dingfeld or anything further, sir, or questions at all.
No. I appreciate your presenting much of this on a personal level yesterday and we had a good Q and A yesterday, so thank you very much to both of you.
Thank you.
Councilman Goods.
Listen, Ms. Little is keeping the people's money safe.
Trying hard, sir.
That's a good sign. I'll hold comments until we get the 13, there's a few things, but I'll hold back until the 13.
I understand. Councilman Meniscop, anything, sir? Councilman Citro, any comments further, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Little, thank you for yesterday's meeting. I do appreciate you and staff. We had touched on, three members here were part of the Charter Review Committee and we had an amendment that went to the voters and it was approved that we change our investments around. How is that going to affect our budget? How is that going to affect our savings? How is that going to affect the city with our abilities to change our investments?
Thank you for that, sir. We are pleased with this change because for a city of our size with the needs that we have, under the prior structure, we were greatly impaired as far as the interest earnings that the city would receive. To put that in perspective real quickly, in 2008, on an average portfolio of about $500 million, the city was receiving almost $24 million in interest earnings alone. So imagine what we could do with $24 million. At a low, our interest earnings fell to 3%, I'm sorry, to $3 million. So from 28, 24 million to 3 million, that's a huge swing. And over a 10-year period, the city lost interest earning opportunities of about $133 million. So a lot of that was driven by the market overall, but we were hit doubly hard because of our very, very conservative investment policy, which only allowed us to invest in CD, bank CDs, government obligations, and US Treasury notes, bills, and bonds. And at one point where we had been in 2012 at 5%, I believe it was, we dropped all the way down to 0.95% in interest earnings because we were so restricted. So now, because of the Charter Review Committee's recommendation and the voters approving an amendment to our policy, we can adopt a policy that mirrors the state of Florida's, under Florida statutes, policy, with the exception that the city cannot invest in mortgage-backed securities, which was the whole cause of the downfall. So we're very excited that we'll have additional flexibility, but keeping in mind, the city's approach to everything is conservative. So even with the expanded investment opportunity, we will look to preserve our principle and really, really have an acceptable risk tolerance as we move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Little.
Thank you. Councilman Moran, anything, sir?
Thank you, Ms. Little. Thank you very much for your update and your projections. And like we said, those are projections. And I believe today, item number 24, thought of that process that gives you the ability to invest wisely in other things.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may also, and I kind of touched on this a little bit, I have, in revenue and finance, an awesome team. And Mr. Perry, who each of you met, our budget officer in our briefings, we work very closely together and we're very proud of our team. And in addition to that, our departments are awesome. They work very hard to keep the costs down. They communicate very, very effectively and continuously with the revenue and finance department. So just wanted to put that out there. It's really a team effort and they do a fine job.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Carlson, anything, sir?
Yeah, just two quick points. I second the notion that we're lucky to have you. I've only met you a couple of times, but I'm very impressed with your unique mix of finance, accounting, and also economics and appreciate your advice and help. In addition, I would love at some point, I'm not proposing anything in particular right now, but would love at some point for us to think about how we can, by diversifying the economy, we talked about that in one of the charts, so that we can at least be maybe on par with the growth rate of the state or other cities that we compare ourselves against. Would love to figure out how diversifying our economy can help add to the revenue streams. This is a big philosophical discussion for another time, but there's a perverse incentive for cities to focus on real estate development because we get so much money from it and that sends Florida in eight- or 10-year boom and bust cycles. And my fear, which I've talked to you about, is that we're headed toward another one and we need to diversify our economy. And I'll say as a last point, I was very heartened to see that after we were all, went through our inauguration, we all came into this chamber, but our new mayor went to an innovation and technology summit that was going on. And so that gives me hope that, you know, all of us are interested in diversifying the economy. Would love to figure out how your modeling would cause us to increase revenues related to all of that, so for another day, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you for all your hard work. It's been, I've been working with you for about two and a half years and it's always been a pleasure. You know, we spoke yesterday about some of the issues. I continue to take what I call a modest conservative approach with regards to the budget, which is that the economy that we see right now, about 3.5% unemployment, is not going to last forever. I was talking to you yesterday about some of the issues that I see in our economy, including the fact that one out of every four of our federal dollars and federal budget dollars is from a budget deficit, even though we have a roaring economy. That makes no sense. We're spending about 1.1, 1.2 trillion dollars a year in money that we don't have infused in a 20-year we don't have infused in a twenty trillion dollar GDP economy. That's not good. Um, so even though the economy is very good, I think that there is, um, uh, certainly justification for being very conservative with that. That being said, we cannot, obviously, and I know we all agree on this, ignore the needs of our neighborhoods. Just today in this council meeting, uh, we heard from our friends with Villa Brothers, Villa Brothers Park, an improvement that came about due to tough budget decisions in the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget. In two thousand seventeen, we heard about Bush Boulevard, uh, uh, an area that needs tremendous development. I know Councilman Goots, since day one here, has been very passionate about investing more in East Tampa. We share that passion a hundred and ten percent. So we want to continue to make those tough decisions, uh, and build on the successes and build on the tough decisions that, uh, previous councils made, including in two thousand seventeen with the budget vote that we took. Um, that's certainly something that's very important. We have to tighten our belt, but we can't tighten it so much that we ignore the needs of our neighborhoods. We can't drive, uh, sixty in a forty-five, but we shouldn't necessarily be driving forty-five miles per hour either. Maybe we should drive forty. Uh, that, I guess that's my message, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can't drive the, the same. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Fifty-five, that's it. Thank you. Okay, uh, now we go to information reports and motions by council. Uh, Councilman Dinkfeld.
I'm good today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Goots.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to present a commendation to Mr. James Wright, President of Yellow Jacket Little League, and the league itself, for continuous service and community. Mr. Wright, who is a Little League baseball icon, has dedicated much of his life to the Yellow Jacket, and his commendation will be presented to him at a later date to determine.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by Councilman Goots, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything further, sir?
No, sir.
Uh, Councilman Maniscalco.
No, sir.
Uh, Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to present a commendation to a young Mr. Evan Wilson on, uh, July eighteen for achieving his Eagle Scout.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay, just kidding.
It'll come back, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Miranda.
Just one, sir. I'd like to make a motion to make a commendation to Mr. Lee Hoffman, who is retiring after nearly sixteen years with the city of Tampa. He has served in several capacities in the city, um, best known for the instrumental completion of the city's River Walk, and then twenty sixteen agreed to become the training manager for the city human resource office. I would like to make that, uh, commendation to him on May twenty-third, the year twenty nineteen.
Yes, sir. Um, and, oh, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor. Any opposed? Anything further, sir?
That's it.
And, and Councilman Citro?
I, I apologize, council members. On the eighteenth, we do have a workshop, so that, uh, commendation to young Mr. Evan Wilson will be in the evening session.
Okay. There you go. Um, and well, amendment to the motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, Councilman Carlson. Yes, sir. Okay. Uh, just very briefly, if I may, I move that next week, which is the week before Memorial Day, that Craig Gross, a Gold Star parent whose son, um, uh, died in Afghanistan, make a brief presentation on what Memorial Day means to the families of fallen soldiers on May twenty-third at nine AM under ceremonial activities.
Aye. We have a motion from Councilman Viera, with a second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, and just very briefly, you know, this past Saturday, Councilman Goots, Councilman Citro and I, they're all laughing already, we went to a, um, a fire training session, which was just awesome. I mean, I, I showed myself to, to not have what it takes to be a firefighter, clearly, uh, but it was really, really good, and I would encourage everybody, uh, uh, up here if you can to make it to next years, and really, any elected official or public official out there to see this, because as much of an appreciation as we have for first responders, and I know Councilman Goots was one for almost thirty years with TPD, um, this just gives you point one percent of what they go through, but it really increases, uh, your awareness of what they do. And then lastly, I just wanted to, just on a personal sentiment, just put my support. I know the city council has previously voted on this on the state level, uh, but the, the U.S. House is going to be voting on the Equality Act, which deals with discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation, and, um, I, I know that we strongly support that, and I hope that if it does get to the President of the United States, which I doubt it will with the Senate, but I, I hope that it goes through. I know that Ben Diamond in the Tampa Bay area has been trying to pass that here in Florida as well, so just a personal note.
Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I had a long discussion with my staff on the question of whether someone has the authority to move forward or not. We'd like to get some more research. It's in several different locations, so rather than the definitive answer I gave you, we'd like to get a clearer clarification for you.
Yes, sir.
And we'll get that to you as soon as we can.
Good, that's a good point. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to receive and follow, I think some of, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
You adjourn, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]